Good evening, welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education, May 6, 2024 work session. The Board of Education has reconvened from a closed session. We will move to 4.01 with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will please stand.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, we will move to 5.01 where we will adopt the agenda. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. Is there any discussion, Board members? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented say aye. Opposed, the agenda is adopted. We will move to 6.01 with our Board Chair comments. And at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Escobar. She has some certificates she wants to give the Board interns. Ms. Escobar.
Thank you Chair, thank you Board. I just want to recognize the hard work of our Board interns. This year, we had two semesters of internship, but then they worked as a group together on the Hispanic Family Resource Event that happened. And they volunteered at that event. And it was really wonderful to see all the hard work that they did to promote that event and then also to be there on hand. They did everything from serve food, clean up, work with students, watch them while their parents were getting resources. So they're a great group. We've also had the opportunity from staff to learn more about the school district. And I also got to do that as well. So I appreciate everything that I learned from them in our conversations. And I just want to say thank you for their hard work. And for the ones who are graduating, congratulations. So I just want to call them up, one at a time, to just, to give them their certificate. So first is Bailey Barkley. Sahashar Nakka. Zamora Reed. And Michelle Capelli. And we have another intern that wasn't able to be here until after seven because of other obligations, but Preck Ruthie is also going to be recognized today too. So thank you so much. We're going to take a picture and then you can go around and be congratulated, I guess, by each of our Board members. Thank you.
I'd just like to take a moment too, to just thank Ms. Escobar for working with the Board Intern Program this year. She has done a great job of introducing new topics and really got to know what students want to know about board work and the different areas of the district. So thank you so much, Ms. Escobar, appreciate that. Will.
Just wanted to see if you could speak a little bit about the application process for Board interns and you can just tell the public.
Thank you for that opportunity, Ms. Sandage. Yes, so the application for new interns closed on April 22nd. We did extend it a little extra for people who needed to get in some last minute recommendations. So I have those now and I'm going to be going through them. And the goal is to get a response back before the end of the school year so they know who they will be for next year. And also to ask them what semester they prefer, whether fall or spring. So it was open to any rising juniors or seniors.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to 6.02 with our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Adcock. This week, I'm proud to announce that it is Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And we wish a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our teachers across the district. We want to thank them for being the dedicated educators who continue daily to shape the minds and hearts of our students. We know that their work transcends the classroom and has a lasting impact on our students. Teachers, your patience, your passion, and your unwavering support inspire love for learning that lasts a lifetime. We want to thank you for igniting this curiosity, fostering the growth, and believing in every student's potential. One of the things I really want to commend them on is their inspiration. It's probably the key thing that I see on a daily basis when I visit schools, when I walk into classrooms, and I engage with teachers. They're just tremendous at inspiring their students and making sure that they get the best and the most out of them on a daily basis. Our school system owes a great deal of gratitude to our teachers because they are the backbone of why we are so successful. As you saw, some of the interns that came across here this evening, I'm sure if we spoke to them personally, they would tell us some of the great things that they experienced with the teachers that they have engaged with in their career here in the Cabarrus County Schools. I think they are a fine example of a lot of the work that they do themselves, but also of the dedication our teachers put in on a daily basis to help them be successful and achieve the accomplishments that they do throughout the school year. And hopefully that extends into their careers. But you are an inspiration, we truly appreciate all the work that you do. So thank you. And we have many things going on this week to honor you in our schools and to show our appreciation for you. So if you see your teachers out, please tell them thank you and wish them a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Our Parent Engagement Survey will end on May 9th, so your participation is important to us. So we encourage everyone to take part in this anonymous survey. It takes about 10 to 15 minutes to complete. It's very important for us, we want that feedback from our parents. So please take some time to complete this survey. We've had a lot of interest and a lot of people get on the portal and get on the survey. We just need to make sure that we get on and you spend the 10 to 15 minutes and finish it, because again, your feedback is very important to us. Quick reminder to check our website, the graduation dates are on there. Our early college graduations are going to be held on Saturday, May 18th at West Cabarrus High School. Our traditional high school graduations are held May 22nd to the 24th at the Cabarrus Arena and Events Center. So I ask everyone to check those schedules and see what time your school is participating in the graduation ceremonies. We are very excited to take part in that exercise because that is the culmination, it's the why of what we do and we get to see our students walk across and graduate. And it's just a great week for all of us to participate in that event. So please check the schedule and get that information and you'll be very aware and in tune as to where you're supposed to be and on what day. In our CCE Summer Camp Opportunities, both the VEX Robotics and CTE will host camps at various locations over the summer. Again, for more information to register your child for one of these great camps, we'd ask you to visit our website and to look under the community dropdown bar and the information is there for you. We have a lot of interest in this and these camps fill up quickly. So please register early and we can take care of your child through the summer through this wonderful event that takes place here in Cabarrus County Schools. And that is all I have, Mrs. Adcock.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki. We'll move to 6.03 with our Attorney Comments. Mr. Eisenhower, do you have anything to share?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to 7.01 with our Reports. And we will start with the Edulog Technical and Efficiency Report and Recommendations with Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Mr. Art Whitaker. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kapicki. You'll bear with me for a moment, I'm going to get set up here. All right, so once again, me and technology don't get along so well. So there is a theme sometimes from presentation to presentation. It's my pleasure to be with you here tonight with Mr. Whitaker, our Director of Transportation. What we're going to share with you is a recent report and a recent analysis that was done by our education software partners, Edulog. Back in the fall, we reached out to Edulog, who is currently one of our providers for our parent portal, our parent communication, and some of our routing software applications. We asked them to review or to conduct a bit of a program evaluation. We wanted to get a sense on how are we performing as a district when it comes to transportation from an efficiency standpoint, from an operational standpoint, and from a technical standpoint. And so we go back to the last 15 years, ever since we introduced the three-tiered busing model. We haven't had really a comprehensive third-party just analysis on our overall effectiveness or overall operation itself. So we reached out to Edulog and we certainly enlisted their support to come in and do a bit of a, you know, sort of a review and say, what do you find, what do you see, what do you know about the way in which we are certainly handling our day-to-day operations? And the reason we went through Edulog, obviously, when it comes to the routing software industry, they are one of the names that is one of the leading providers out there. So right there, just some background information on Edulog themselves, you can see that they've been providing software solutions since 1977. Their goal is to make sure the software and hardware solutions continue to stay up to date and are also providing districts with current cutting-edge information, making sure that they can operate as efficiently as possible. Because we know that the more efficient and more effective that our transportation system, as with all operations can become, the more we can take those dollars and redirect those to the classroom where it's really going to serve students and it's going to make the greatest impact there. It also helps us improve our safety and also helps us improve, reduce some of the redundancy we may face just from an everyday operation or day-to-day standpoint. And you can see there at the bottom that they are the primary recommended vendor for the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And they handle all of the reporting capabilities which really drive a lot of the funding elements for LEAs across the state. So there are two types of analyses that Edulog conducted. One was a technical assessment and one itself was an efficiency assessment. So really think of the technical assessment as the input. What does the data look like that goes into the determination of routing? What does the planning look like? Are we actually using clean information to be able to inform what our output would be? And that's the efficiency piece associated with this. We've listed some other school systems, not only in North Carolina, but across the state as well, that use Edulog. And that's just a sample of some of the school districts in North Carolina that you see there that actually have partnered with Edulog. Durham County is another, Johnston County is another, Onslow County is another one, Brunswick County, Buncombe County, Johnston. There are several out there and the list goes on. So again, when we talk about someone who has the credibility and the credentials to be able to come in and provide us with key information, certainly Edulog met that standard.
As Dr. Bowers indicated, that we noticed that in our findings through the report and when the time we had to take, to go through it and absolutely just tear it apart and find out what the most important key findings are. So I just highlighted eight of them there for you. Two are efficiency, have to deal with our efficiency, and the other six, excuse me, two from the technical side and six from the efficiency side. So I'll just jump in there, the data management, the top two basically reflect on the, on the technical side. The data management practices are solid, from driver directions to load rates of no-load stops, to the extensive time and distance management on runs. If you had that report, I don't know if it was emailed to you, but I have the full report, but that's a, I referenced the page numbers that you can go back in that report and see that from. The second key technical efficiency is the fact that we have high number of runs per route. That averages across our system. That's on four and 13. So when you run a triple-tier busing model, the idea is that you will run that bus three times in the morning and you will run that bus three times in the afternoon. So the most you could get out of it is six, six routes, okay? We were, I think the report bears that we were 5.79. So we're extremely efficient in getting those, the maximum routes per bus. The next ones have to deal with our efficiency. CCS maximizes the total number of students transported on each run relative to the vehicle's maximum capacity. That's covered on page 25. The majority of the overloaded runs are reported at the high school level on page 27. Now, I'd like to point out real quick, when they say overloaded runs, that is merely on paper and it is at the high school, the high school level. And I'll tell you why that is. We have, we have a tremendous amount of people that have sports, after-school activities, and the parents basically cover their bet and say, sign up for the bus and if you, we've got to use it, we've got to use it. But historically in transportation, we have realized that you can almost put that bus to 60 people on paper and 40 will show up. So that's actually what we do. We try to maximize the amount of students that we're putting on that bus, but it only overloads it on paper, not actually on the bus. So that's, you see that in the findings. Cabarrus County Schools District has a well-built structure and balanced tier, balanced tier built schedule. You will see in the report, you'll see this sawtooth of a graphic, and then in the afternoon, you see that sawtooth of the graphic. So that's just telling you that the runs fit the bell schedule. Student ride times are low and within district policy, that's on page 30. And most of our arriving, arriving late to campus occurs at the middle school level, and that's on page 36. And if you hold that, hold that thought for just a moment, I have a recommendation that might be able to help us in the next, in the next section. But overall, the general education routes are determined to be operating at a relatively high level. So that is on page 39. So that, gathering all that information and going back with Edulog and going back with the team and trying to figure out what we could do to make some recommendations. One of our concerns is that keeping the bell times well, we want to make sure that we keep the bell times well spaced from each other. CCS transportation composition and growth rate means that we will be feeling more pressure on the runs over time. So that means our time and our load are going to increase. One of the solutions to that is expand our arrival and departure window on the third tier. That would be moving the middle schools to a 9:15 to 4:15, 9:15 start to a 4:15 in the afternoon. That 15 minutes sure does mean a whole lot to transportation. Right now, we run a 7:15, 8:15, and we run a nine bell time. So you can see where the majority of these routes that are coming into the middle school are about, about five to 10 minutes late, maybe 15. So it puts us right there on the verge. And what we're looking at is if we were to actually have that one hour in between tiers, that would absolutely help us tremendously in getting, making sure that we have an on-time arrival into school without missing any educational time. So that's one of the, that's one of the solutions. The concern is that growth in Cabarrus County is projected to experience through the rest of the decade. I'm sure that's no, that's no surprise to anybody. We know that our system is going to be relied on more heavily going forward. And human capital is our best investment, that is our asset. And the more that we can proactively try to gain school bus drivers and do those kind of things, that's going to help us in the long run. We're going to be using some of these technical assessments going forward as well and remain proactive in our planning efforts to accommodate those that want to call this county home in the next few years. And lastly, the concern, I'm sure that you saw it in the report, was the overloaded runs mostly at the high school level, which I made very clear that was only on paper. And where the, where present in the data, we can reduce the accuracy of the data and reduce in regards to the ridership perspective. So we need to try to figure out, how do we create a model that accounts accurately for those high school students? And we believe that through, through parent and through student and through the administration at the school level, we can get a more accurate count on who's actually going to be riding the buses at the high school level. So that's one of our recommendations as well. I'd just like to point out in our conclusion that there's two really important conclusions that can be drawn out of this. We have the technical conclusion, which there are no serious concerns with the data and reflect the school bus, that reflect the school bus fleet that is operating at a relatively efficient level. That's in the executive summary on page three. And efficiency, general education routes are determined to be operating at a relatively high level of efficiency. The district's specific approach is textbook example on how effective routing management can, can be with the correct approach. I really like that word, textbook approach. That's really, that's really, really nice. And lastly, a well-staffed transportation department filled with competent planners, support personnel, leadership that are proactive in their planning efforts. And in reference to that last statement, this whole report is based on the men and the women that do this job each and every day. I mean, it is just a testament to our mechanics that fix the bus, the planners that route the bus, the drivers that drive the bus, and the leadership that makes sure all this goes on. So I have to say kudos to that.
Yeah, and I certainly want to echo that which Mr. Whitaker has shared. We know as certainly constituents, we sometimes hear from, I guess I wish you hear from our constituents, and certainly our goal is to always provide the highest quality of service we can deliver. But this is reassuring in many fronts. And one of the things that was really a takeaway for our team and for the department is to really look at those quotes verbatim offered by Edulog. And again, when we look at this, they are the industry experts, they are the leading sort of, you know, vendor out there to provide this type of service. And when they give us this high praise, it certainly is a lot to be proud of. We know that there are always opportunities for continuous improvement and that will always be the goal. And our transportation team works tirelessly at that. But to be able to pause sometimes, look at this from a third-party's perspective and say, there are things that are going very well. And not only going very well, we're going exceptionally well for Cabarrus County Schools. And to be able to operate at this capacity with a similar-sized staff, if not a fewer numbers in staff than what was in place pre-COVID, with now more students, more routes, more miles, fewer buses, but we're having to run them more now, which is obviously more wear and tear and it places a lot of demands on the actual maintenance and upkeep, is something that this Board should certainly feel proud of. And I want to make sure that that is known. Because again, it sometimes is the, you know, the concerns that we hear more than anything else, but there are a lot of positives that are really happening. Minister Whitaker spoke about some of those routes taking place outside the arrival window. It's important to note that 78%, nearly 79% of our routes are arriving on time within a designated window every single day. Now again, that's not 100, that's what we strive to do. In a district of 35,000 students, of which we have 24,000 students riding that bus and our transportation, us moving in the right direction. So we'll continue to effort that and learn from this and again, participate in these type of opportunities because it helps us be better. Just so you know, the page numbers that are referenced, we have shared previously with the Board, the Technical and Efficiency Report. So again, I hope that that certainly was not something foreign hearing tonight. And with that, we'll pause for any questions you may have.
Any discussion, Board members, Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for the information and for the cheat sheet with the page numbers, that's helpful. The middle school recommendation, I know in my area, there was issues with the bus, but I thought rezoning was going to address that. So do you feel like because the rezoning is happening, you would still need to start later? I understand the way the three tiers are, so we're talking about middle school. Elementary school, the reality is, is you know, if someone's sick or something like that, then you're pulling a bus, you're trying to, you know, and then they still have to get, you know, pick up kids. But I thought we were eliminating some of the distances? So I guess I'm just wondering if you still, this is based on current data and next year we're going to be having a new system.
I would, I would hesitate to say that yes, that would, that would help, but you know, I would have to see what the ridership looks like and I have to see where we were going to be putting those assets. But we're looking at current data today and I don't have the, I don't have the exact answer that you were, you were wanting, but hopefully that we, this would actually happen. I don't know if you were referring to hub stops or you were actually referring to neighborhood, neighborhood buses?
Well, I'm guessing this is, it said general education, so I figured that this was not hub stops, program choice is separate.
All of this data, they reached out and grabbed all of our data.
Oh, they did.
It has the hub stop data in it and it also has our EC transportation data in it as well. So as good as it looks, it still contains the hub stop information as well as it contains the EC transportation.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to understand, and I'll try to be clear, is, is what 15 minutes, how does that help you? Because I'm just thinking about the parent on the backend. So 4:15 makes it harder to get them to soccer, makes it harder to get them to, you know, tutoring, music lessons, like all that stuff, middle school, I'm a middle school parent right now, and things start at 4:30, things start at, you know, 4:45. So if you're, 15 minutes lets everybody sleep in and, you know, the kids will probably like that, but I'm, what I'm concerned about is on the backend. And so I just, I need a, I need a clear argument for why you need that 15 minutes.
Well, I think, I think that's one of the recommendations that are in there. And myself, Dr. Bowers, and Mr. Whitaker have talked a little bit about this. I won't say we made any firm decisions, we're presenting that this evening. But one of the things that we've worked at this year, and it's no secret to anybody and we own it, we're having a lot of difficulty getting our middle school kids, that tier is killing us. And really, the bottom line is we don't have enough drivers to take the buses to where we need them to go. That's really the, the answer is, if we could staff, I know you consistently see that we're looking for 40 drivers and we've been looking for 40 drivers for a couple of years now. I mean, that's just, that's just the bottom line post-COVID. If we could even staff half of that, a tenth of that, if you got 25% of that staff, 10 more drivers, that would leave a lot of problems. So staffing is one of the big issues. So, and our middle schools are taking the brunt of arriving late. Getting home is not as bad, it's still problem, it still has problems to it, but the arrival time is hurting us in terms of kids arriving late because of being the third tier, not having enough staff there. So part of the discussion was, and other recommendation was, if we pushed it back 15 minutes, while it does seem monumental, it doesn't, it's there, it's changed, right? And it's a, it's not what people are accustomed to. We believe we can have a, have a better outcome in terms of getting kids on time for school, even if we don't hire more bus drivers. So that's one of the things that we're looking at and put out there tonight, say, hey, here's one of the recommendations I came across, adjust the times. So that's the real truth of the matter, the nexus of the problem, it's human capital. And your point is well taken because we did talk about the extra quicker activities after school, that was one of our first concerns. But we felt as though that right, for right now, we, let's take a hard look at this and see if this is something we want to come back and recommend to the Board in perhaps June, early summer, so we can give parents a lot of notice. Because if it continues that we have the shortage of drivers, that problem is not going away. It just, it just is not. I mean, I want to be honest with people and it's not that we're not trying. I think when, when we talked about doing this and I'd asked Dr. Bowers to reach out to Edulog to get a study done, we were actually pleased with what came back because you never know. We, we thought we were doing a good job, we thought, you know, and I give Mr. Whitaker credit for his leadership because he's done a great job and I know the stresses that he deals with on a daily basis. But all in all, the report came back favorable. We were pleased with what we saw and honest about some of the areas in where we were having some shortcomings that we need to improve upon. So that was, that's kind of the genesis, if you will, of why we're looking at that at late start time. I know that would be difficult for some people and it'd be a change. And we're not saying firmly that's a recommendation tonight, but that's one that came out that we were given strong consideration to.
Ms. Sandage.
I wanted to understand about, first off, thanks for the presentation and also thanks for your work and the staff work.
Thank you.
I had a colorful conversation with several of the planners at the job fair that we had and they've got some very interesting suggestions. I'm guessing they've already talked to you about it.
Yeah.
But I told them to send me an email and I would forward it to wherever it needed to go, but I hadn't got that yet.
Okay.
Either way, thank you. The question I had was about the high school, where we've got 60 people on paper that are supposed to be on the bus, but 40 people who are actually on the bus. And I'm wondering how that affects our transportation as a whole? So for example, I'm thinking if we're going to these stops where people aren't getting on, then that takes away from gas, that takes away from time. Is that the case?
Well, it is, it is the case on paper. You're looking at more stops more frequently, the more people, we're going to just assign them like they're absolutely there and we're going to be making those stops. But in reality- But in reality, it's a, it's a completely different story. So in reality, it, it works the other direction. We're actually more efficient with less people on the bus, so we have to stop less. But you know, just as far as the report is, is given, the 60 is what we need to even get to 40 on paper. So you know, if, if, the high school bus holds 44, and of course, we would like to have those four more, but I don't really want to, I really don't want to put it in an actual overloaded situation where we have to make adjustments on the fly. So that we allow the system to book up to 60 on a high school bus in order to get the 40. So it's just a matter of on paper versus what actually, what actually arrives.
So why does that need to be fixed if it's not a problem?
Well, because what it does, it's throwing the data off in the report. So the report's looking at it and saying, what are you doing overloading the high school buses? And we're doing it on paper, we're really not doing it, doing it on, on the actual bus. It's just the, the data reflects that overload.
So we're, we're creating the issue, and we can fix it ourselves.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm the one that's doing it.
And quite honestly, they even went so great lengths to say, this is an acceptable practice if the district can account for it. And one of the things Mr. Whitaker and his team, he just shared with you, they've accounted for this. So they're not letting it skew what's happening from a real-time run standpoint.
Okay. The last question I have was in relation to the middle school request for an extra 15 minutes. Did you all discuss any other suggestions in that timeframe, and this is the best one, or this is the only suggestion?
So right, right, yeah, the only thing I'll offer right now is using that, because what we're seeing this, I want to get the numbers exactly so we knew what we're looking at. So with regard to the actual students that are arriving too late in the morning, we have right now, as a result of the report, 3,881 students across the district, which based on the data that was run by Edulog, show that they're arriving outside those established windows in the morning. Of that, 2,621 are the middle school level. So that counts for 65% of what we're seeing on a recurring basis. Again, points made about what does that time look like on back end are valid. But we're also seeing two at the middle school, why not the heaviest late departure in the afternoon? We are seeing routes leave 15, 20 minutes, sometimes 30, depending upon what it is, off the lot later. So we do have, that's the second highest level in which we're seeing late departures. So the early morning late departure suggestion would then allow that to build in, because we do have a condensed window as it currently stands between the start time for elementaries and then our middle school routes. Our high schools don't really impact that so much, we're able to get out on the road a little earlier to run those routes, which cover larger geographic areas. So we're able to begin many of those elementaries closer to their established times. But the 45 minute start time between the elementary and then what then becomes the middle school puts just an increased pressure point on transportation. And you know, as we've said, the, the hub stops are included in this, so our program choice transportation. But it does then put kids arriving after the bell has started and instructional day has started. The recommendation would allow principals to be able to schedule a little bit more as their needs might be at the school level, instead of, again, in some practices, maybe pushing some things at the start of the day, which, you know, kids may, may not be as impacted, maybe not core academic classes being at the start of the day and shifting that around. Rather than having using that as a means to absorb it, this would allow for that. The afternoon, it would also give us a rival time a little cleaner and closer to dismissal time at middle schools, because that's the one we're also backing up a little bit.
So it sounds like that, that's the only thing that would help to remedy the situation.
To mitigate this one, just should I have any substantive change altogether?
Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I think it's good that we have an independent assessment of our, our program, I think, and especially if it comes out that we are as efficient as we can be. I would tell you, you said it covers everything, that's what I'm a little confused on, it says, on your last conclusion, so general education routes.
General education, that is correct.
What is, what other routes are there?
So, and I think Mr. Whitaker was saying there was an analysis that was done, this the general education, applies to those students that are not receiving transportation as a related service according to their identified disabilities. So many of our EC routes, if the student is EC and rides a general education route, standard transportation provided, that would be included. If it was a student that necessitated a separate setting, a specialized setting, that was being perhaps a different route across the district, those were not included in this reporting.
Right, but we still provide those services.
Yes, sir, we do, absolutely.
And I think it's important also to, to point out that EC students that receive specialized transportation, they have no boundaries. They have where we, where, where the program lies. So I could not include them in the education routes because they, they don't have, they don't have an attendance boundary.
Okay. And I think we talked in prior months that we were going to evaluate the hub stops and that for upcoming years, that, so that's not even included in this. So we're doing a good job as it is, but you're still going to look at that, are you still, is that still the plan, is that what is?
That, that's an annual process, it's always, always occurring.
Yes, sir. Okay. And then I, you know, personally, I don't remember the board ever approving start dates and times for schools, that's never really come before the board that I can remember. And I had a question on, what is a no-load stop, what does that mean?
That would, that, that is a really good question. I have to find that out myself. That, that is a, the, the, our computer system, our routing system actually reaches out to Power School on a nightly basis, and we do an UPSTU, what they call an UPSTU, and we compare our data, and we transmit data, or it goes one way or the other. And basically, a student will fall off, or will request transportation, or request no, no transportation. So until we can get to the route sheet and modify the route sheet, we're going to be stopping there and we're not picking up anybody. So a no-load stop is exactly what it is. We're picking, we, we stop there, but we don't have any, we don't have any students to pick up. And that's usually, we find that out usually at our UPSTU process.
Right, that's what you said, the last thing here says well-staffed. Transportation department full of competent planners can trust that quickly.
Exactly, exactly. We get that report every day, and if you're not riding, or you've fallen off of our routes, we'll go ahead and update the route sheet and send it to the driver.
Okay. And we've already addressed the issue of making the most difference would be to fill those buses instead of having them sit empty to get the drivers to fill them. And the last part is, we've referenced this report, how does the public get to see that report?
We can make a copy of this report available on the transportation website.
So if they want to see what we're referring to on page three and 39 and all that, it'll be on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Floyd.
Thank you guys again very much for the report and for all the work that you do. I am kind of curious on the 4:15 end time, and this, I know we keep asking about that, but you know, I'm a commuter, 15 minutes about that time of day, that can be a life or death difference, I imagine, especially on Ms. Escobar's end of town. So I, I would assume we've thought about that and looked into, like 15 minutes can really be a 60-minute difference sometimes, especially at that time of day. So talking about human capital, knowing that drivers and staffing is a huge issue for us and would solve all of our problems, I'm glad you brought that up, and I'm glad we've mentioned that a few times. So one, I know we talked about the, the under, under the hood exemption, and I just want to put it out there that Kevin Crutchfield's office got back to me 12 hours later and is working on that, and they followed up with me again, I'll let you know about that. So just, so people know that legislative session, when we come and they, and we talk to them, that, that, that helps, and I appreciate you guys helping us bring that forward. I've got three questions about things that, you know, if we've been trying, we've been 40 drivers short for a long time, and it's going to take us, who knows if we'll ever get the 40 drivers we need. So how do we get more efficient with the drivers that we have? So three questions that I get a lot when I talk to the drivers out there. Number one, the exclusion radius. There's an exclusion radius, something like roughly about a mile around the school, can you talk to us about that? Do we utilize that? How would that help our efficiency if we exercise that? Or would it help, and is it a good idea?
Well, to be honest, okay, well, I think it's important to understand that going forward, everything needs to be on the table. And there is a North Carolina law, and it is a 115C 242, and it basically says that the LEA is not under any obligation to provide transportation to someone that lives a mile and a half from the school. So, you know, and just whatever that might look like, we might have to end up, or the board might have to take a look at that, no matter what you, what you want to agree on, it can be a half a mile, a mile, but the, the way the state of North Carolina views that is that you can go up to a mile and a half. That would, that would, I have been at schools that pull out of the, pull out of the bus lot, and they make a right, and they go right down the street, and they turn on their lights.
And that's what I'm getting, I'm hearing a lot of, they're, they're, before they even get the engine going, they're stopped and stopped.
They're stopped and they're letting children off.
And stop, and never even get up to 30 miles an hour before they stop, and it just, they can't even get going.
Right. Kannapolis has a PTZ, they're called parent transport zones. So one, one of the examples I can tell you is that Kannapolis does have a PTZ.
Okay. Next one, are all of our drivers 10-month employees? Do we have any that are 12-month?
Well, I, they're 10-month by the state of North Carolina for bus driving, and then I employ a few of them on short-term assignment over the, over the summer.
Because we do use them in the summer.
To wash buses and to, you know, feed children at a summer feeding program. So we try to employ as many as we can during the, during those point, during those moments.
And the more we can do that, I would imagine that helps with attrition.
Absolutely, absolutely.
In the summertimes when we're losing them to Amazon.
Correct. Because they have to have a job, and they go out and find a job, and then it's hard to get them to come back.
Okay.
And when it comes to the time to schools, because they have to leave that position.
And then obviously, the thing that comes up that's hard to talk about, probably too much to tackle here, but is, is discipline, getting on top of that. So I don't necessarily want you to answer that or fix that right now, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are talking about that a lot. I know we've had discussions about it, we've had discussions about it, but a lot of board members have. We're working on that, and I think that would help us a lot too with attrition as well. So those are my questions for, so I appreciate you answering that.
Thank you.
And hopefully that's helpful to everybody. Yes, student discipline, sorry, yeah, student discipline.
Mr. Treadaway.
The occasional parent disciplines.
Yeah, thank you again for the report and the presentation. One of the things I've observed is this year that I don't recall ever seeing before is we're having some early high school stops in the morning. Is that just to expand that time between tier one and tier two?
Well, that high school stop is because of the fact that we're just.
You're having to double route?
Yeah, we're, we're having to double route at the high school.
Okay.
And the high schools have been so, so nice and so generous that they let us drop off, you know, a little early so we can go back out and get those, get those children that have to go all the way to Union County to get.
Maybe they're nice to you.
They've helped us out.
I, I've evidenced that some of our middle schools are not able to start instruction at nine o'clock. We could say that, but the, the kids just aren't all there. So I, I understand the need to maybe look at widening that window, but I just want to remind, just again, bring the staff into the room here for just a second, how is a middle school teacher ever going to get to a doctor's appointment? I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know the answers, these are rhetorical questions, but I do feel like we have, we've set ourselves up where our staffing is just not a fair fight when they are, you know, and when they have kids that are sick and that, they can't take, they just can't get there in time. And, and nine o'clock is too early for them to try to get in before. So I don't know, that's, that's just an equity issue that I know that our middle school folks face. The other thing is, do we still have a frequency of ridership to keep a seat?
Yes, it's 10 days.
10 days?
10 days, yep. We ask that, we're counting you every day, and if you don't ride for 10 days, then we remove you from the ridership.
Okay, good, thank you.
We give your seat away.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
So actually, y'all are, y'all handled pretty much everything I was going to say. So the, the things that I've heard from the bus drivers, and the reason it's difficult to, to get people to want to be bus drivers is the discipline issue on the buses. And so I, I definitely think that moving forward, especially next school year, we've got to, over the summer, seriously sit down and think about some policies that we need to put in place to make sure that these bus drivers feel safe when they're on the bus driving these kids. And then Mr. Floyd actually brought up the radial, the radius one mile, or I thought it was a mile, mile and a half, whatever we decide potentially for it to be. That's what I was going to ask you with those middle school numbers that you presented, how many of those would be, do you have it broken down into how many of those children actually live within a mile or so?
I can get that, I can get it, yeah, I can get it.
I'm just curious to see, because I, I hear what everyone else is, is saying, to Mr. Floyd's point, you know, 4 o'clock or 4:15 could make the difference of whether or not you get home at five or, or seven. Yeah. And so I do think that that's important to, to do that as well. I, I realize that no matter what decision that we make, it's going to be an issue for someone, and potentially a hardship for someone. But at this point, we've been understaffed with bus drivers for years, and, and something has to give at some point. We, we're going to have to do something in order to make sure that these kids are getting to school on time, and that bus drivers and the folks that we potentially are hiring as bus drivers want to come in and take that job on because they feel safe in doing so. So thank you guys for that presentation.
Ms. Sandage.
I just want to clarify, are we talking about student discipline on the bus? All right. The other thing was in relation to Ms. Lindsay's point about the, and Mr. Floyd's point about the mile and a half, I just want to make sure that we consider students that truly have a hardship and truly need to be on the bus. And if we do make, put in policy where we extend it, or whatever we do, we just make sure we have a process for people to file a hardship if that child truly needs to be on the bus.
Yes, ma'am. And that is great feedback, certainly from the board, from those to whom you've spoken with as well, and things to which we'll certainly take back. Did not feel as if that would be a recommendation for tonight or for next year moving forward, because one of the things the report did not review was that specific level of detail. So that now becomes coming upon the team to take a look at that and say, okay, would this additional measure sort of yield any efficient outcomes? Which might be a more investigative search there, certainly. But the data just didn't indicate that, so therefore, that's why you don't see that perhaps even mentioned in the considerations or the reporting itself. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Floyd.
One more quick one. Are, do you know any districts around, I mean, everybody's facing this problem. So have you seen any success anywhere else around us? Or how much are we talking to other districts? And you know, what, what are we doing to find out what works and what doesn't?
That's a good question. I actually had a Jabalak meeting this past week, so it's funny you should ask that, with several chief operations officers from surrounding districts in the Southwest region posed that same question. One of the things we found unique, and I just was sort of surveying the group as to what time do they allot in between their starts? Now, different, districts are different, they have a lot of unique scheduling options, they have a lot of different bell schedules, bell times, they vary widely. But for those that follow more the traditional design, and that would be an elementary regular start time, a middle start time, and a high school established start time, what you find is about an hour in between. It's one of the things to which they have incorporated to allow themselves to be able to account for increases in ridership, because we've witnessed that, but also increases in miles run, increases in distance traveled as a result of, and we, we know this is no secret, just reduction in force. It's, we're not unique in that sense. It's not to certainly give an excuse, as she used to say, we're, all are experiencing that. So one of the things they looked at is that adjustment in between, because they realized the importance of the instructional time, the importance of having to make sure that kids are there when school day starts. And that was really the impetus for it. Others have gone to some other measures as well. There are some districts that utilize middle and high school students riding on the same routes. Now again, that introduces a whole set of other potential, you know, challenges, but that's another way to be able to leverage greater efficiency in some regards. And they don't do that in all locales, they'll just do it in some, depending upon the proximity of the high school to the middle school and whether it be on the same campus. So, it's another measure that others have moved to, to be able to help capitalize upon, uh, you know, fewer labor or shorter workforce or, and, um, ever-increasing demands. Uh, so to answer your question is that I think folks have kind of come up with what's the tailored model that works best for them, based on their unique program and their unique needs and the location of their schools, because that's a big driving factor. Yes, sir?
Mr. Tredaway.
Mr. Whitaker, I know, uh, but besides the walk zone, statute, things change, but used to, the elementary, I think, was a half mile from the stop and secondary was a mile is what the statute required, but we are, we far exceed that, do we not?
We have no, we have no zone. We, we pick you up.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm talking about outside that zone.
Oh.
How close your stop has to be to your residence. We used to far exceed what the statute required.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know if we still do or not. I don't know what, in other words, in elementary, how close does the stop have to be?
It can be right down the street.
I mean, how, how far can it be?
I, I think, just to clarify, I think you're referring, if I'm, I'm mistaken, Mr. Tredaway, to how far the stop is from the home or the residence.
Yes, yes.
What's the map?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
I guess my point is, we exceed what the state says we have to do. We're a whole lot closer unless we've changed, and I doubt we have.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Okay, I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to seven point zero two with our community eligibility provision for schools for twenty-four, twenty-five with Mr. Bowers and Stephanie Alman. Good evening, Ms. Alman.
Good evening. Thank you for your time.
And good evening again. So, uh, with me here tonight is Ms. Alman, our Director of School Nutrition. She and her team have been, uh, working tirelessly, uh, these last few months to be able to make plans and preparations for the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school year. And in doing so, one of those tasks that has certainly been at the top or one of their priorities for these past few months is looking at the landscape of our schools and determining which schools, uh, would be, uh, most appropriate or would be best eligible for the community eligibility provision. That should be something that, uh, the board certainly has heard before. She's going to give a little background on what the CEP, as it's commonly known in the school nutrition industry, is known as. But they've been able to, uh, discern the schools that would be, uh, able to continue to participate, uh, and she will be able to share that with you tonight. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Alman.
Thank you. I'll grab that clicker. Thank you. I hope it'll work. Well, there it goes. Okay, so, I did share this, um, document with you for a couple of weeks in the, uh, weekly update and hope you had a chance to look over it a little bit. I'm going to go through it briefly, but give you an opportunity to ask some questions because it is kind of complex and, and easily confused, especially with some of the terms that are shared with other departments. So, CEP is, at its core, a process for school nutrition programs to qualify schools that may be in a pocket of need by measuring what we call the ISP, the Identified Student Percentage, and I'll go into that in just a moment a little bit more. Students that qualify for programs, government programs, or different, um, ways of, I guess you could call them qualifying them for free, reduced, or for free meals without having to fill out an application. The assumption is made that if the number is high enough, that there's probably more students in that area that just aren't applying, but they probably are from a similar economic background. And so, it's a way to, uh, bring more children into the cafeteria and to be able to eat. So, it's also, part of it is just streamlining the process instead of processing eighty percent of the school's, um, student families' applications that we process the direct certifications and then it gets, um, converted, like I'll go into it in just a second. So, we don't process the applications in just, uh, any longer at those schools. We use that Identified Student Percentage to determine eligibility of the school, not of the student. At that point, once you are a CEP school, all students can receive any kind of meal or snack, not à la carte, but meal or snack at that school at no charge. Uh, and there's no extra cost to families or, or to participate, uh, in the program. And it does, because everyone is free, it removes a stigma of being free, so there is no, um, separation there. Okay. It's our special place. There we go. So, what is the ISP? This is kind of where we get into the weeds a little bit because of all the different terminology, but the easiest thing to remember is if there is another method by which a student could be qualified for free meals, we call that categorically eligible. If they're in a category that fits this description and they don't have to fill out an application, then they would be considered as part of the ISP, an Identified Student. So, that would be homeless, migrant, runaway, those are all certified by the district. Foster, as certified by the Department of Social Services, the information we receive. Just as an aside, this is not a situation where a child may be living with someone else. This would literally be if a child was the ward of the state in the foster program. So, it's very specific. And then they could be directly certified through eligibility for some state programs, which is food stamps or SNAP, EBT sometimes we call it, FDPIR, which is for Indian reservations. We don't currently have any of those. TANF slash work first, which is cash assistance, we do have that. And, um, then a very, very tiny amount, in fact, I don't even think we have any of this year, but you have specific situations where a principal can approve a student. So, all of those fall into what we call the ISP. What is not in the ISP is a student that doesn't qualify for any of those, but fills out an application. So, they are both considered free or free and reduced, but the students that fill out an application without, yes, you do sometimes get both, they do both, um, the application and the directly certified. But a student who just does the application, doesn't qualify for anything else, they don't fall under the ISP, but the two of them together make up the free and reduced rate at a school. So, those free and reduced applications don't count towards that. So, how does ISP translate to CEP? So, since this is a school nutrition program, the main idea behind it is how are we going to reimburse schools for meals? We currently pay three, or receive three tiers of reimbursement from USDA, which you see here. The, um, students that receive a free meal, we, we receive the highest rate of reimbursement from USDA, then reduced, and then paid. Paid is like fifty cents, so it's, it's just a little bit extra. In a CEP school, that ISP, so if it were fifty, or you can even look down here at the examples, sixty-two and a half would be perfect. An ISP multiplied by one point six, which is the current USDA multiplier. When that number is multiplied, whatever that resulting percentage is, is the amount of meals at a school that will be reimbursed at the free rate, so at the highest rate. If it's less than a hundred percent, then the SMP supplements that amount or it's expected to come out of the rest of the operating expenses. So, you have to carefully look at who is going to qualify if your SMP is in a financial place where they can sustain that. So, obviously, you, the higher you, uh, the higher the ISP, the higher the reimbursement. So, it's, that's the way for it to be financially healthy. But there are lots of ways that are really too complex to go into for the time we have tonight, but there are lots of ways for schools and groups and districts to qualify in order to make that number as high as possible to allow as many students to participate as possible, because there really aren't a lot of downsides to this. So, an easy way to remember, it is non-CEP schools, it relies on the student's individual eligibility based on an application. Or it can rely on they're directly certified. Uh, it doesn't, that you don't have to be directly certified only at a CEP school. You can be directly certified at a non-CEP school. But at CEP schools, um, it is the school's eligibility, so the student's not going to have an application, so that, um, we wouldn't know what that individual student's free or reduced eligibility would be unless they fill out an application for another purpose or maybe had other children in the household. So, this is basically the timeline that we follow every year. On April first, or the nearest Monday, we collect the school data, we calculate the ISP for each school, we double and triple check the data, of course. We report that data to DPI, who publishes it. And then between that time, all the way up until June thirtieth, is where the district does a, basically a feasibility study to see what schools can we afford to do it at, how many students can we reach, really what is the best scenario for us, for our students within our resources. And then by June thirtieth, we have to notify DPI of which schools that we are going to elect to, um, participate in CEP. And then ongoing tasks, we import those directly certified students every day. Those are, um, behind the scenes, this is a question I get a lot. We receive behind-the-scenes downloads from DHHS telling us who, who is qualified for, uh, food stamps or the TANF or those other programs. And then, of course, we get them from Student Services and so on. We extend benefits to students in a household. Sometimes, that just means if a, a child's name in the household was left off of that certification, we kind of mine the data to see if this should be on that application, call parents, whatever, make sure that child gets on the application if needed. We conduct verification annually on a percentage of our, uh, student applications. We add those McKinney-Vento students, add foster students, and then we just do those year-round, making sure data is correct, that we pull in the maximum number, we're not leaving anyone behind so that we have the correct number. So, that is basically the end of that presentation. We have, actually, do you have questions before I just move on to the next part? Because you can put up the Word document, um, that is in that presentation, or in the, uh, board agenda. But the schools that will be participating in CEP are the same schools as last year minus Beverly Hills. There we go. So, we have eight elementary schools, one middle school, and then there you can see three high schools, Concord High, PLC, and Opportunity. And just, I just put as a matter of if you're curious, that would give us a total for that group, a ISP of sixty-four point oh seven, which would mean a hundred percent of the meals served at those schools will be reimbursed at the free rate. So, that's a very good, um, financial model to follow. Now, questions on CEP? Any questions, board members? Mr. Walter?
So, this is breakfast and lunch, or it's all meals?
Exactly. And after-school snack, too.
Okay, and then you're calculating, saying you're going to get more than a hundred percent at some other schools in a reimbursement? And you're applying that to these?
You can, you can get those.
You're applying it to these other schools? I mean, there's not a, you didn't put the student numbers at those schools.
Exactly. So, the most that you get is a hundred percent, so to maximize that and avoid those extra two percent, one percent from just dropping off the face of the earth, we group all of these together so that we have a group total of a one hundred. So, that means that the ones that are less than a hundred, they'll be brought up to a hundred by the ones that are over a hundred as an average. It goes by the average across the...
So, even if their average is below the, whatever, the one point six you were talking about earlier?
Exactly.
Earlier, you're still going to get a hundred percent reimbursement?
Correct.
So, every child in that school can have the?
Yes.
The free meal, free meals?
Yes, absolutely. The only thing they would be responsible is if they wanted to purchase à la carte snacks. Ms. Sandage.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm trying to make this make sense, so...
Sure, it's okay.
Okay. So, if I have the, only these schools that have qualified, that means you go through that test where they meet a certain number and we can afford it?
Yes.
Where their kid, where their schools, where we meet that certain number, but we can't afford it, I just want to rule that out if that's not the case.
There almost always are, because you get to a point where you reach a threshold where you are balancing the amount of reimbursement that you're going to get in. Sometimes, just the regular traditional claiming is really the best way to go even for the students. And so, you get to that point where, and it, it's different every year because it, it involves things like the cost of, it costs you to per, prepare a meal, all of that. So, we get to kind of a point where we feel like we can afford it based on what the following year's budget is going to be, and then, um, make a decision from there. And then we're locked in for four years if we want to be. So, if it goes down, that's useful there. Does that make sense?
It is. So, there are schools that potentially need this, but we can't afford it.
There, there are some schools that are below. We used a threshold of fifty-five percent. So, there are schools that are below it that would qualify it. USDA last year, or I guess USDA really, US Senate, um, lowered the threshold for participation from thirty percent to twenty-five percent. But in order to participate at that rate, they would have to be paired with another school or in a group or done as an entire district, because you have to have forty percent minimum in order to participate on your own. So, the, there are times where it's not really, um, not only is it not financially viable, but it's also not, it doesn't really make sense for that school because the need is so low that you are better off really targeting the folks that you know need that and making sure you get free and reduced applications from them. Does that make sense?
It does, but I still would like to know the schools who meet the criteria and we can't afford them and like the, the rationale behind it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tredaway. Oh, did he have one? Okay, sorry, didn't see you.
I was just, this is a four-year lock-in?
Yes.
So, how does redistricting impact this?
So, that's a great question. So, since every year, you're basically using the previous year's data to qualify, you are locked in regardless of any changes, if you want to be. You can always drop out, but we can stay in even if the ISP at schools drops lower because of this group, as long as there are not any major redistricting changes after that. But they will adjust an ISP that goes up, um, at least at the end of one year. So, by this time next year, they'll let us know. If it went up as of April first next year, then the amount will go up. If it drops, they won't adjust it down. Good question. Ms. Lindsay.
Sorry, that, thank you for this presentation.
Sure.
That just brought me into a whole other, so if it's for four years, and to Keisha's point, um, if we have other schools that are right on the cusp of being able to qualify for this, what I want to make sure of is that during the redistricting, if things change a little bit, that we're, uh, providing the, the right school with the right, uh, meal?
Yes.
Free, free and, and, and that kind of thing.
Great point, yes. So, when you're locked in, that's voluntary. You don't have to stay in that. You can, at any point, every year, you can change up how you do your, um, your configuration. So, you can rearrange groups, you can drop out completely, you can add all the schools, you can really just reconfigure it according to how the district can work it. So, that's when you take the opportunity from year to year, once we have next year's data, we'll really be able to see, okay, um, maybe it's a good time to add this, or maybe we can't afford to and we have to remove some, we've had to remove some before, which we don't like to do, but you also, you know, you have to be sustainable as well. So, the, the lock-in is not that you have to participate exactly how you had it the year before. It's, it's that if it goes down, you have a little bit of an insurance policy that will get a child, like if you want to stay in four years, it'll at least get a, a child through high school, through middle school, and through a lot of elementary schools. So, as much as you'd like to stay indefinitely, you know, you do have to look at it again. But it's a little bit of a safety net, so you, you can stay even if it drops and we find out under redistricting that a school has dropped a good bit, but we still think it'd be better for them to stay in, we can opt to do that. Does that make sense?
So, does, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. So, next year, you'll present what changes?
Exactly.
We've seen through the redistricting?
Yes.
And then we can make an assessment then?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Escobar.
Thank you, um, for all this information. So, for people watching, uh, this is, this is possible through the federal government. So, you're being creative and, and getting as many kids to qualify as possible.
Yes.
So, that next year, these kids who go to these schools, they don't have to pay.
Correct.
Okay. Even though they're on a school that, you know, so this is creative math to make the most out of our federal dollars?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Exactly.
But to be clear, all the other schools, the individuals can apply?
Absolutely, yes. That, that's a very good point to make if somebody's watching to, to understand. Families can apply at any point during the school year and an individual can qualify even if they're not at a CEP school, absolutely. Any other questions?
So, just to clarify, you said something earlier, for the folks that are on free, not free and reduced, uh, food stamps, EBT, um, there was a few other criteria.
Yes.
You said that you are able to see those folks on the back end?
Yes.
And get information from like the Department of Social Services and are, then able to apply for those folks?
Um, we don't have to apply for them. Once we get the info, they come in as free. We mark them as free as soon as we get that info from DSS and DHHS.
But that's only specific to the CEP schools?
No, that is across the district.
Okay. So, that tells me we're getting a lot more folks that we wouldn't have normally got in the first place, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually is. That's a great point. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. Ma'am, thank you. Okay, board members, we'll move to seven point zero three, the Toshiba sixty-month renewal and contract selection with Mr. Phil Penn.
Good evening, Mr. Penn.
Good evening. I think I actually have the next three items on the agenda, so I'll be here for a bit. Let me talk to you a little bit about our Toshiba copier leases. We are at the end of a five-year lease with Toshiba, who is our current provider. Typically, the way that copier leases are structured is they tend to be about five years in length. That specifically ties to the estimated life of the copier itself. So even though you've got a lot of digitization that's taken place in copier technology over the last, say, ten years or so, there's a lot of mechanical parts that still are in a copier, right? So they tend to break down once you get to about that five-year range. So there is a state contract out there that we're leveraging for this. There are five different vendors that are part of that state contract process. We contacted all of them to get pricing in from, from them, and we also contracted, contacted one other vendor, which we currently have a relationship with, who declined a bid. So the five that you see here, and I know this is a bit of a reading chart, so I apologize for that. All these are structured a little bit differently, so we had to kinda conform it to based on an apples-to-apples comparison as best we can. Some people charge for the equipment, some people don't charge for the equipment but pay a per click, what they call a per-click basis. And a per-click will be if you're printing in color, if you're printing in black and white, the pricing's different. Some will charge for both. So if we can slide out to the right-hand side of that, so we can see that the monthly cost and the total annual, annual average cost, and I apologize, I've got notes here. So they ranged in terms of the pricing that came back, Visual Edge Kyocera was about a million dollars over the five years. Our current provider, Toshiba, came in at four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over the five years. And what's kind of interesting about that, it is actually about ninety thousand dollars a year less than what we're paying right now. So they came back with a very good deal for us. And that includes a full refresh of all the devices. And we have somewhere upwards of four hundred-plus devices across the district. So it's a five-year commitment, right? And you'll see their pricing structure is there is no monthly charge for the equipment itself. It's all on a per-click basis. So we used our existing volume to sort of model out what we think the cost is gonna be going forward. So on the basis of that, it's our recommendation that we renew for another five years with Toshiba at a significant discount to what we're paying today.
Any questions? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I don't recall us reviewing this before in the past. Was it under the amount?
We could not find any record of this ever coming before the board, and I can't really explain why.
And then you kept saying total over five years, but then your column says average annual cost of four hundred and twenty-three thousand.
You're correct. I'm sorry to interrupt.
What is correct?
Yeah. The, the four hundred and twenty-three thousand is the correct annual cost.
So every, every year is four?
But it'll be four twenty-three if your usage does not grow over that timeframe.
Okay. And the reason for the decline was there was a drop in the color copy charge? Is that what they?
That is a, well, that is a piece of it. I think they just wanna retain our business, and knowing that we're going out for RFP, they made a very competitive bid.
So there was a bid. It's a bid, or it's not a bid, or it's RFP, what is it?
It was an RFP. We requested pricing from everybody based off the state contract.
Okay. What is an RISO versus a color?
RISO, please.
Uh, the RISO machine, I, this is very exciting.
It's your time.
Yes, let me tell you all about it. So we have the, in Cabarrus County, you have these RISO machines where it will like speed copy all the ones you need in a fraction of the timeframe. And it's saving us the copies. So if I only needed, if I had one of my small classes, and I just needed twelve copies of something, I would just use the regular copy machine. But if I needed a full set for all ninety-six of my students, I would run it on the RISO. It costs us a fraction of that and does it in such a faster little speed thingy. So it's very exciting, but...
It's like a modern-day mimeograph for the folks that remember mimeograph.
Yes. It does. It's great. You can, you can adjust it. But the, the benefit is that it is obviously cheaper. And so for those of us that have large class sets, I can, I don't feel guilty as much about making some copies, right, of things that my students need. It's less of a financial strain, is what my people have told me, so...
Shall we share what the teachers, exactly what the copyrights are, or is that how it's at?
Well, please don't put a cap on what copies I make, but yes, it's, it'll help us, you know, if, if the teacher's using it correctly, right? If it's a class set or less, you use the regular copy machine versus if you're making something on bulk, you would wanna use the RISO.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're excited. It helps you with what you do, so, thank you.
So yes, to answer your other question, Mr. Walter, the, the primary difference is on that color pricing is that they dropped the per, the per-click charge on the color. Yeah.
Ms. Sandage?
I'm not saying that I would want us to pay more. Like, these are astronomical fees in comparison to this one, but I also am of the opinion that if it looks too good, it probably is. So I'm, I'm a little skeptical about the fine print. And I mean, that's just a statement, but, I mean, this is really, really low in comparison to what it should be costing us, and I...
Based, based on what? I'm sorry.
Based off of all of the quotes that have given, that they've given us from other, from other providers. And then I'm wondering, what was their previous quote? Like, what do we pay previous years?
So you can see their twenty-three, twenty-four number in the bottom left of that spreadsheet is five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And that five hundred and eleven thousand dollars is actually pretty close to what Xerox came in with as a bid.
Right. It's just a statement, and I just...
Well, I tend to read all contracts before we sign them, so I think we'll be okay.
I'm not insinuating that you didn't...
And if I need to, I'll, I'll invite board counsel to do the same thing. But yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. Sometimes a deal is too good.
Yeah, okay.
But they, they very clearly wanted to keep this business.
Ms. Lindsay?
So to tag on to a little bit to what Ms. Sandage was saying, I'm, I'm a little bit under the same kind of idea, like why, why so much lower? So what you did say, though, was that that's based on the current volume?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So when we increase volume, because we will?
Again, based on what?
Well, obviously, I mean, we're gonna have more kids, we're gonna have more staff, we're gonna have more schools, we're gonna have all of that. So what, when you read the contract?
Yes.
All I'm saying is?
Yes.
Just?
Well, it's a per-click.
How much more?
It's a per-click. So if you're saying that you're gonna go up two percent, I could say I could probably with some great confidence add two percent to the four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and be pretty close to what I think that contract is gonna cost us for the year.
Okay.
Right? If it goes up three percent, or if it goes up four percent, you know, it's proportion.
Right.
You know, could go down. If she makes less copies, I don't have to worry about it as much, right?
Uh-oh, there comes the quota.
No, I get, I get the point, right? I mean, it's, it's, I can't predict for you in any great certainty what our, our years, our usage three years from now is gonna be, right? But I can tell you based on our actual usage what I can get to pretty closely, and that's essentially a knockout bid from Toshiba.
Ms. Sandage?
So I guess, so does it go up every year, or this is for the five years or four years?
This is, this is it.
This is it?
Every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You bring a good deal, and you think it's gonna go real smooth. I don't know.
So we'll keep you up here for seven point zero four with the budget summary and board report.
Well, I, I have good news to share. We're no longer talking about a deficit. We're talking about, we're just probably gonna come in as a surplus for the year, and perhaps a substantial one. My staff and I went through a very detailed budget analysis back on April eighteenth. We were there for two and a half hours going line item by line item through the budget to make sure we were in good shape. We repeated that process again today, in what was about an hour and a half meeting, just ticking and tying all the remaining numbers out. And what I could tell you is, my best guess on what we think the surplus is gonna come in for the year is somewhere between a million and two million dollars. There is an awful lot of work that went into getting us to that place, not the least of which is what's also mentioned in the memo that talks about a Medicaid funds. I've come to you before and said that we're way behind on Medicaid. I had mentioned, said two point two million, you know, actually two point eight million when you go back a little bit further. I sent an email to the state office that handles this, and I'm not gonna say that it's cause and effect, but a week later, we got a check. And then a week later, we got another check. And then last week, we got two more checks. And then when they told us, it's a one point one million dollars coming in June. So if you look across all of that, we're actually in a much better place in terms of those Medicaid collections. And, and maybe it's just, it's just fortuitous timing that they all got caught up on where they're supposed to be. I have not verified that with any other CFOs that were in a similar position. But I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of generating a surplus for the end of the year, which would then drop into fund balance, in which case our new fund balance policy would likely come into place. Now, the caveat I always put out here is, we're still about two months away from the end of the year, right? If there's anything that can go wrong in that two-month period, so we gotta be careful about where that ends up. But I feel a lot better about where we are now in terms of our budget, and where I think the year is gonna come in than certainly I felt any time in the last couple of months since I've been here.
Any questions? Ms. Escobar?
Our, our schools, I know your team has worked so hard, so thank you so much. And I know that you did that school-wide, like all the schools, county-wide, I should say. The question I have is, is at the, these principals at the end of the year have to fix, we were just talking about nutrition and stuff, that they're usually scrambling to find money to cover this debt. Is there any way that the surplus can go to that? Because it's federal funds, I don't know what the rules are.
So what we've discovered about the, the school lunch balances is, long and short of it is, is that the finance covered it pretty much historically. When we dug into that a little bit over, over time, it really wasn't a policy change. What we discovered was at the end of the year, that the, while the principals held the line on the cap as to how much stu, how much debt a student can incur, then it went to the alternative meal process. At the end of the year, it appears to us, and I'm giving you some preliminary information when we do some research, that the finance department pretty much covered the balance on that. So we're still kinda working through some of that and changing, maybe change the policy a little bit, talking with the, I've, I've met with all the principals on this. This was one of the topics that we talked about, got some feedback from the principals, which then led to some discussions with Dr. Bowers and Mr. Penn at the cursory level. And we're kinda digging a little deep now, but it seems to us historically that when that balance came out at the end of the year, the, it landed at the feet of the finance department, and some of it landed also in the food service department. But we're still kinda working on some of the details of that. Anything to add to that, Mr. Penn?
Yep. I, I, I'm just concerned about a model that relies on the district to underwrite the cost going forward, right? Because what if we weren't in a position of having a surplus? What would you do then?
So that I understand. I'm not trying to solve the problem. I'm, so what I'm asking is, that's kinda a very broad overview of the history of it.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for the solution tonight. There, that's kinda something we're always discussing. But what I'm trying to explain to the board is that ultimately, we covered it. And, and the last two years with the policy change, and I think, I really think because we changed CFOs three different times in the last year, that it's led to some confusion as to how we covered that. And it landed at the stores, it landed at the foot, the foot of the schools. I think the answer, the solution is somewhere, there's a, somewhere in the middle kinda solution as to how we, we come up with a better way to do this, okay?
Yeah. My, my, my point was only that I don't think you'd change behavior if you underwrote it here.
Right. And then you and I have had that discussion, when I'm not, I'm not looking for a solution right now, I'm just trying to give you the history of where, how that bill was paid. Does that make sense?
Mr. Floyd?
My question's along those lines. Can you remind us, policy eighty-one oh one, we agreed for surplus to be used towards deferred maintenance, is that correct? How were those projects selected? Like, if we have a million dollars in surplus, and we say, okay, we're putting a million dollars towards deferred maintenance, for example, how are those projects selected?
In terms of using a surplus?
Right.
I think we go back to the same methodology that we use for the budget. If you remember, we ranked all those projects.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, the first thing we, we would do is we would wait to have all of the financials. I wouldn't recommend doing anything until we had those, right?
Right.
Second thing is, I think we would look at what do we get from county funding come June seventeenth?
Right.
Because that'll determine sort of where we go. But the fact that we have ranked lists would tell me, okay, if they funded through twenty-four, we might be inclined to look at, you know, what comes next on, on that list, depending on the size of, the surplus, and whether or not the board wants to move forward in using the surplus in that matter.
Thanks.
So I think, Mr. Floyd, with that, too, we, there'd be a conversation with Dr. Bowers and his team, and include Tim Lawler and Brian Cullen to see what the immediate needs are. While the list is definitely the, the number one place we would look, I would still want to have conversations with the facilities maintenance team and their leadership to make those decisions.
Yep. Since it's new policy, I just wanna make sure we're kinda thinking about that and letting people know.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sandage? Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move to our items for consent or action on our Monday, May thirteenth business meeting. We'll go to eight point zero one. We'll have Mr. Penn here for the budget resolution amendment zero zero five and summary of changing the fund.
All right. So I'm happy to share that we're changing the initial budget resolution one last time to get us back to a balanced budget, which is a requirement under state law. So it only took us until May, but we got there, which is good news. You're gonna see in your packet that there were a number of budget amendments, and budget amendment number five that touched funds one, three, eight, and four. And we're going in that order because the first, one, three, and eight, that's state, federal, and our local special revenue, and then four is the capital. And I'll talk a little bit about them. This is the fifty-seventh revision of the state budget we've had so far. So it's like it's trying to push a string a bit, trying to figure out what's coming from the state at any given time. However, we did get a total overall increase of one point eight million, additional transportation funds of about eight hundred and sixty thousand, new allotment came in for summer reading camps of about four hundred thousand, increased allotment for textbooks for two hundred and thirty thousand, textbooks carries over from one year fiscal year to the next. So if we don't spend that all this year, it will carry over to twenty-four, twenty-five. And a new allotment for plasma games, which is kind of an interesting thing. That is a competitive grant. I have never heard of this before. It is ESER-linked in some respects, but really controlled by the state from their funds. And it's a competitive grant that is targeted at STEM, and in particular, learning chemistry and physical sciences through what is essentially a game-based approach, in trying to apply what you're learning in those classes to sort of real-life applications through that gaming process. So I was pretty pleased to see through the effort of the folks that put the grant application together that we got funded on that. So I think that's a good addition to us overall. Within federal, Fund Three, it's an overall increase of four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, the biggest piece of which is the, a school-based mental health grant, called a FAS grant. We knew that was coming. It's just the, the fund, money finally dropped. And then a, a small increase in the allotment for the IDEA, special needs targeted assistance grant for five grand. Special revenue, the total increase was a little bit under ninety-nine thousand dollars. That reflects a little bit more money for the ABC grant, Mary Frances Wall stabilization grant of forty-five thousand, a little bit more in our projection for the indirect cost that we'll recover from our federal grants. And this one was a little bit interesting. We've had a cell phone tower on one of our schools, and I don't remember which one, that, what's it?
Well, that one.
That kicks off almost twelve thousand dollars of rental income. So it doesn't change the income, it just changes the bucket. We're keeping the, the rental income in, we're moving it out of the capital account into the special revenue account, which is really more where it belongs. You really shouldn't have recurring revenue sitting in a capital account, right? So then, in Fund Four, you'll see a net increase of a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. A hundred and seventy-five thousand is just a true-up of, an allotment that came through from the county at the end of fiscal twenty-twenty-three, offset technically by that correction for the eleven thousand dollars and change from the, from the revenue from the, the cell phone tower. So the net change in, in Fund Four was a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. But if you were to go to the summary exhibits and follow on after that, you'll see that the total budgeted expenditures for twenty-three, twenty-four now stands at five hundred and twelve point one million dollars with a balanced budget in all of the funds.
Any questions, board members? Okay, is everybody in agreement to add this to the consent agenda for the May thirteenth business meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Penn.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to eight point zero two, our policies for approval on first read with Dr. Sandy Ward. Well, I think that's Mr. John Legrand.
Yeah, sorry. Dr. Ward is not with us tonight, so you guys get to be team. I am here to present the policy. So I have three policy updates to bring before you tonight, the first one being forty-two seventy, which is concussion, a policy revolving, or involving concussion and head injury. And it was a PLS update with revisions to statutory and legal references and other minor changes. The second one is policy code sixty-one twenty-five, administering medicines to students. And this was another PLS update from the spring, updating, or it updates the division names of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and it updates resources and footnotes associated with that policy. So those were the first two. And then we have a third policy that is up for revision and, or was, is up for approval, which is policy forty-three eighteen, use of electronic devices. And this is, there's a little more, I guess, explanation and, and discussion to go into this one, so... So I wanted to show you the revisions that were brought forward by our cell phone work group. It was a district work group that made revisions, and then this was brought forth by our policy committee. If we could put on the PowerPoint real quick, just to talk a little bit more about our cell phone work group. And I just want to publicly say, this group met on a frequent basis over, I think we met a total of five times, a lot of time and effort and discussion and debate went into this recommendation and I'm bringing forward to you guys tonight. And it was around the use of electronic devices. So again, that group was a group of CCS teachers, administrators, parents, and central office staff. We met five times to discuss the revisions to Policy 4318, and this is for recommendations for the '24, '25 school year, obviously. And we didn't want to leave the students out, so we also had a separate work group of high school students who also provided us input. And it was, it was really interesting to see how their input, I guess, correlated to or compared to our adult cell phone work group. So the goals of this work group were pretty simple. We had three main goals. We're going to develop a district-wide stance on student cell phone use while at school by our students. And then to consist, create a consistent implementation protocol across the district in an effort to increase consistency. And then finally, we wanted to create a public campaign supporting our stance so that the word got out and everybody understood exactly what our rules and guidelines were on cell phone use for next year. So with this, we arrived at a recommended stance is on student cell phone use. Now, there was a lot of discussion on this topic in the work, the district cell phone work group, and it was decided by the majority of the group that due to the developmental stages and ages of the students, that we should have a description or guidelines for each of the three school levels. So I'm just going to read real quickly. The elementary school, students are not allowed to utilize cellular phones or electronic media devices from arrival on campus through departure from campus. Students are required to power off and securely store their cell phones away from their person throughout the school day. So that was for elementary schools. Middle schools, and by the way, this was the exact verbiage that our cell phone group came up with, work group came up with for each three, each of these three. Middle school, students are not allowed to utilize cellular phones or electronic slash media devices from arrival on campus through departure from campus. Students are required to power off and securely store their cell phones away from their person throughout the school day. Students engaged in after-school activities will have access to their phones for communicating with parents. So that was the caveat for middle school. High school's a little different. This is where we spent most of our time. It was, as you can imagine, a lot of opinions and input on how we should handle cell phones in high school. I will add, it was not a consensus, but a majority came up with these, the stance that I'm going to read to you right now. Students are not allowed to utilize cellular phones or electronic media devices during instructional times. Students may use cellular devices or electronic media devices during non-instructional times, which may include arrival slash dismissal, breakfast slash lunch, and class change. During instructional times, students are required to power off and securely store their cell phones away from their person. The group also asked that we put a overriding statement, which you see at the bottom, for any of these circumstances, that students would be required to put away cell phones when instructed by an adult. So the high school, you know, different and a little more complex. I have asked Dr. Adam Auerbach to be, to come up and be here tonight, which I thank him for being here and being so patient to come up and present. He was part of the cell phone group, and he was also a, he gave an example of what he is doing at his school right now presently with cell phones. And there's a lot of what we modeled, our cell phone work group, or the cell phone work group modeled their recommendation off of. So I'm going to allow him just to explain what happens at Concord High School presently with the cell phones and how that is handled, so that you have a little bit better understanding of what this is going to look like.
Good evening. So this year at Concord, we started piloting kind of a new emphasis on devices and the distractions that they were causing. So we started that at the start of second semester. So the presentation that's being pulled up is something, is a version that we gave to all of our students and staff to really start to talk about why we were doing this. Just giving a bunch of high school students rules and say, do this just because, doesn't always work. So we really wanted to kind of go through with the students why we were doing this, why we were really reemphasizing this.
Trust that little round, yeah.
Yep. So we started, and we wanted also to make sure that all of our students understood that devices were not just cell phones. Because sometimes, some of the biggest distractions we saw were kids watching soccer games on their Chromebooks and things like that. So we really wanted to make sure that the kids understood that, we want them engaged in their classes and not on devices unless they have the permission of the teacher. So devices include, but not limited to, phones, earbuds, Chrome, watches, anything else that can keep you, distract you. We did say, listen, there's plenty of times that you can have the downtime to do that stuff and check this and play Angry Birds and whatnot. Lunch, class changes, bus, you know, in the classroom whenever your teacher tells you can. So the example we use for that is if you're in a 90-minute art class, right, and you're painting for 90 minutes, and the teacher says, listen, you can listen to your music while you're painting, as long as the teacher says it's okay, it's okay. But you can't just pull it out and start doing stuff unless the teacher does that. And then why is this a focus? So again, I think the important part was understanding the why for our kids there, that talking about social media, the real world, code switching, know how to behave at different times, their academics, future, respect, and other consequences. So we actually had some of our staff and our respected teachers come in to explain this to each of our grade levels. We had class meetings, you know, one-day seniors, one-day juniors. So Emily Francis, who y'all know, is, you know, big social media superstar, and explaining that there's an appropriate way and time how you use social media when she doesn't do it while she's at work. She does, you know, all those types of things. We talked about the real world. Mr. Thacker, who was our former teacher of the year and our CT coordinator, came and talked about when he worked in the bank and that there's an appropriate way that we use technology and devices in the real world, and you just have to learn how to do that. That if he was on his phone, he told a story about one of the first times he got like a text message in a meeting, and he looks down and his boss called him out later and said, you weren't paying attention in the bank meeting, right? So he talked about that. My football coach came and talked about how you behave at different places is different, how you act in a classroom is different than how you act in a football stand or at a football game, that players can't pull their phones out in the middle of a football game. That'd be crazy, right? So you have to know where you are and how to code switch. Our IB coordinators talked about, you know, the academics and your future, and the distractions and the disengagement can affect you and your academics going down if you want to go to the number one public university in America, the University of Florida or something like that. That you choose your future. The academics and all of these things have, I don't know, who put that picture in there? And then respect, you know, it's important that you understand that sometimes if you're not paying attention, someone asks you a question, you might look like you're being disrespectful even though you're not trying to. Or, you know, if the teacher says, you know, take your earbuds out, oh, but I don't, no listening to music. Well, it doesn't look like that. It looks like you're doing that stuff. So really, the respect value is very, very important there. So we talked about what the consequences are going to be at Concord High, and then also in the real world, right? There's a hierarchy, you know, first ones are warnings and parent contacts and detention. Thursday school at Concord is a, like a double detention, right? A 90-minute after-school detention, ISS up to OSS. And then also the lack of respect. It's not a consequence that goes in educator's handbook, but if you're always playing on your phone when your teacher or principal's trying to talk to you, then you kind of lose some respect. At some point, you're going to want to ask something for them. And then in real life, you might, tickets, if you're driving down the highway playing on your phone, you're going to get tickets, loss of driving, lose your job, the mental and physical health issues and the loss of the relationships and respect that are happening there too. And I showed this, I said, listen, if we don't get it under control here, there's other states and other school systems that are completely banning that they can't come into the building and that all of the stuff that comes with that, you know? Kids were really shocked by that. It was the New York Times, it's a valid source, right? Like, we got to be smart about this because, you know, interesting things happen in Florida. So I want to share kind of the data that how we've seen how that's worked here. So I'll first say that Ms. Witherspoon, who a lot of you know, my assistant principal, she definitely has taken the lead on a lot of this. So Witherspoon, if you're listening, I give you a shout out. So referrals to date, we knew that January, when we started the second semester, we were going to have a lot of kids because we were renorming what the expectation is around our devices. So we had 258 referrals in January, 141 in February, 72 in March, 97 in April, and 14 so far. We have about 1,000 students at Concord this year, so we've had about a third of our students got at least a referral for being on a device when they weren't supposed to. If you looked, 225 of them only got one or two, which was a warning and a parent contact. We only had 94 that got three through six, you know, three or four, five or six referrals. And only 14 students out of 1,000 that had seven or more referrals for devices, which ended up having ISS. So for the most part, our kids, you know, got it and figured it out. And I think the most important stat is zero, the number of parent complaints that I had around that. So when, the first ones, we started making calls. We use Parent Square a lot to make contacts, and Parent Square, we hear from parents a lot, works very well, make, communicating with them. We call and say, listen, Johnny was on his phone today while he was supposed to be doing, you know, math work. We had one parent argue with us about that. They said, yep, they should be doing math and not playing on their phone. The communication went really, really well. Teachers, admin, Parent Square said helped a lot, but every parent was very supportive of that type of thing. I also think this worked really well because it was really about empowering the teachers to have control in their classroom. Like, 25 kids shouldn't just be playing on their phones and watching soccer highlights when you're supposed to be doing work, right? Like, the teachers came to us in the first semester and said, some of these kids are just, they just think it's okay to be that way. Some of it from post-COVID, right? They were sitting at home on Teams, they could have their phones out, it wasn't a big deal. But teachers definitely feel more empowered about that right now. Like I said, the parent support, they were all agree, yes, they, my kid's on their phone too much, I'm perfectly fine with you telling them they can't be on their phones at school. So also, I think a realistic and relevant way for us to handle this, you know? We didn't, in the real world, I mean, a lot of y'all probably have phones out, right? Like, you got to learn how to balance those types of things. So it's also a manageable way for us to teach the kids the right way to do this. They're going to have phones, they're going to have phones outside of school, they're going to have phones in their jobs, teach them how to prepare for their future. It's also non-confrontational. I know some places talk about taking the phone, oh, Johnny's on the phone, take their phone. We don't want to get into that, that's when you're going to start having parent phone calls, that's when you start having issues. My phone was a crack before my teacher took it, right? And then all of that comes with it. We haven't had any of those types of confrontations. And this is also within our control. So we know you'll hear things that, you know, mental health and social media and all of this stuff that's creating problems other places, but I, at Concord, it hasn't really been an issue. Some of the things that happen like that happen at the, on the weekends or at night when I don't have control anyway. So we're only focused on what we can control at Concord between 7:00 and 2:15. But overall, it's gone very, very well, and feel pretty good about how it's going.
Thank you, Dr. Auerbach. And that was one of the main things that was discussed at the cell phone work group is eliminating, what is our focus? And our focus is to eliminate distractions to learning. And that is what we can control when the students are in our care and are, and should be focused on learning. And that was the reason for taking a very firm stance on, if we're going to devote all of our energy, we're going to devote it on protecting instructional time, and we're going to make sure that there is no exceptions to that and that our students are not distracted when teaching and learning is going on. So along with that, there was one little part on my other one, Matt, if you could go back for just a second to my, I know we're going in between PowerPoint presentations here. Yeah, and so just one final thing here about our cell phone work group, that there was one of the main things we talked about, again, is consistent implementation across each of the three school levels. We wanted it to be consistent, whether you were at elementary school A or B, or high school A or B, that it was a common guideline and common expectation for what the, and communication for what was allowed at each of those levels. And then we talked a lot also about student use of personal electronic devices for instructional purposes or as an incentive, or those items going to be allowed during the school day at each of the levels. And then, of course, with the newer technology items such as smartwatches, iPods, those things, what are we doing about those? And those were part of the discussion as well. Again, a lot of, lot of good discussion in this group. And then after we were able to come up with a recommended policy, this then went to policy committee a few weeks ago. Another round of discussion on that, and what I'm bringing you to tonight, is the draft of what was created, or the revision that was created by our cell phone work group and then vetted by our policy committee. So that's where we are right now, and now I'll turn it over for any questions.
Ms. Sandage.
So what was the selection process for the students and parents for these work groups? Like, how were they chosen?
They were chosen, we selected principals to participate in this, and the principals selected the parents to, and students to participate in this.
Okay. So nobody could apply? They just were chosen by the principal? I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, Dr. Auerbach, Concord is not like Hickory Ridge or Cox Mill. I mean, those are, and this is just me thinking out loud. These are two different, or three different schools, and the parents from those schools, in my opinion, are different, and they should be, right? So I wonder how this would correlate to other schools? Would it, would the, would the data be the same? Would it be better? Would it be more concerning? That would be my question. The other thing that I have, and I don't know if you have any answer for that.
I can't speak, I only work at Concord, so I can't speak to other schools. But I will say, pretty much every kid in my school's got a device, right? And every, and if not, we give them Chromebook, right? We all, we give them all Chromebooks, so that the device part, everyone had those things. I think, I think all Concord High parents are always supportive of everything that we do, right? So like, I would think pretty similar reactions across the other one.
And I would disagree with you, but I ain't no doctor, I'm just telling you. The other question I had was in relation to the watches. So I use this watch for time, I use it to see notifications. Are we asking students to get another watch?
No. Where we arrived on that is that the students could wear a electronic watch, or whatever we want to call them, a smartwatch, to school. We're not asking them to get a new watch. However, it is strictly for you telling time, and it should not be a distraction. The moment it becomes a distraction, you're typing on it, playing games, looking at notifications, then at that point, then that would be use of an electronic device.
Last question. I didn't see this in your presentation, but I want to see if you could tell me a little bit. How does this affect or not affect the teacher's time? Like, how often are we sending kids or going to a kid and stopping what we're doing to say, hey, you need to go to the office, or you need to stop that, or whatever have you?
Yeah, so I, we actually talked a lot with the staff, said, guys, you know, be smart about this, especially as we're getting used to this new process. Start every lesson, whenever it comes, all right, guys, remember, phones away, da-da-da-da-da, start that way. And we told them, because at handbook, you can put in multiple kids on referrals. So if you had five kids that all did, you don't have to take the time to write five referrals. You can say, on device, da-da-da, Billy, Johnny, Suzie, da-da-da. So one referral done, and it goes that way. Parent Square has been great for parent contacts. We tell them, you got to tell the parents, right? The first time you hear from the, that your kid got in trouble should not be from the principal on the 10th time or whatever. Parent Square, same kind of thing, you can send a message, Billy, Johnny, Suzie, and send it out there, your kid got a write-up today for that type of thing. It was a lot at first, right? As we had to re-norm that, but it definitely got less. And I think multiple teachers have expressed me, they've gotten way more stuff done. I remember one of the teachers, one of the first weeks, a math three teacher, said, everybody got all their work done today. Like, it's the first time all year, we haven't had to fuss or waste time about that kind of stuff. So I do think it happened. Like anything, I have 100 teachers ups and downs. Some teachers probably have more success than others, but overall, I think they actually save time by less, like, distraction and having to fuss with that kind of stuff.
Definitely. Thanks for the presentation and the time it's taken. I don't know if you have anything that you would like to say as our teacher liaison on the board? I'm not saying you have to, but just thoughts, if you have any.
The students on their devices has become a huge imp-
The students on their devices has become a huge impediment to our learning and our success and using our time wisely. I'm of the same mindset, a lot of what Dr. A has mentioned with what they're doing. The students have to kind of be trained on what expectations are, and have to learn how to navigate the world with having a device. But there are times where it is just, you know, everybody's face is in a, in a screen that's not on me, and we had that conversation in my classroom today. So it definitely is a huge obstacle that we're seeing. I am concerned about their development, and we're seeing the impacts of, of the technology and the use of social media and the demands and rewiring of their brains. I definitely think it is something that is happening. So whatever we can put into place to support the teachers, to effectively be able to do their job where we have kind of some backing, I think is going to definitely be beneficial in the long run for our students. That clear expectation across the board for everybody, and how to, like, what the expectation is for when devices are appropriate and not, because they are gonna have to learn how to live with them. And so, why not learn at school?
Thank you.
Can I add one thing too, I'm sorry? But one of the other things we did when we really started is really try and put out parent information. So again, I do a weekly video that goes out on Instagram, we make sure it went out in the newsletter, all of the policies, sending out the videos. The whole staff was actually in the video talking about how we're all gonna be behind this to make sure all the parents are aware. Because again, if Johnny's got away with being on the phone forever, so the parent information part was huge for that too, I think that was there too.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you, I appreciate that you implemented something and then collected data on that, because that's helpful when you're evaluating something. When you look at May compared to when you started, is it really because the referrals went down? Or are teachers just like, I gotta focus on teaching right now, and I don't, because we're at the end and we gotta make sure they're ready for exams and stuff? And you know what, so-and-so's got their headphones in, that's their loss? You know what I'm saying, like, I'm just, I just, are the, is that number reflective of really like success? Or is it reflective of, you know, this, teachers don't have time to be doing this?
It's probably, really only three days in May, so it's just last week, so you know, so that's part of it there. I think, I'm sure there's some, some teachers that are like, yeah, I'm not as worried about it. But I know multiple teachers, you know, I don't have maybe the quantitative with the qualitative, said, yes, it is way better now. Where I used to have to, you know, fuss at 20 of my 25 kids, now there's only a couple that I'm having to have this. And so I do, it is better, but I mean, I'm sure there's some that are not as strict as they could be. But I think all teachers feel much more supportive of that, they write a kid up for a phone, or a device, a Chromebook, whatever, that they're gonna be supported and the consequences will be given out.
So this, this hasn't been, we haven't had a ton of time with this, so the public, I don't know how well informed they are, but we did get some emails already. And so, some of the questions that we received was, why wouldn't we just use the middle school policy for the high school policy?
Yes, that's, and that was some of the discussion we had in our cell phone work group. And one of the main, I guess, reasons for the differentiation is the structure of the school. For example, in an elementary school, you have one teacher or two teachers that supervises a student. In a middle school, you have a team approach, so I'm on a team of four teachers or six teachers. And when they change classes, they rotate between my class and across the hall over here and over here. But in high school, the bell rings, kids go everywhere, I may or may not know the kid that's passing by, I may not be able to keep an, keep an eye on everything that's going on when we go into the lunchroom. In middle school and elementary school, we're sitting in a, you know, in a, in a table by our, with our classmates. In high school, there's kids everywhere, there's kids sitting wherever they want to sit, and it's just the, with all of those circumstances, along with the developmental age, or the developmental stage of the kid, the age, the communication that some have with student, some of the things that the work group brought up was communicating with their, their after-school activities, their, their occupations, their athletic teams that they're on. These things get sent to their devices, and then they check them and say, oh, well, practice got moved, you know, stuff like that is, is the thing that, that happens a lot. And then, you know, it's another thing is, do we focus on the enforcing all of the, the not using the cellphones during the non-instructional time? Is that where we're putting all of our efforts, where Dr. A and his whole team would have to be in the lunchroom constantly going around telling kids, put phone away, where they could be in classrooms, helping teachers teach, learn, instead of trying to get Johnny off of his phone when he's watching a basketball highlight? And that's, that's just some of the examples that we're giving up, you know, on a, on, in the, in the cell phone work group.
I'll say, as a, as a principal, if you come into the cafeteria during lunches, not everybody eats, right? Some of them, that is just downtime for them, they're sitting there looking at their stuff. Without that, I would, I would hypothesize that I would deal with more stuff that comes up if they can't do that. They need that downtime, they're looking at that, they're looking at social media, they're watching friends' highlights, they're watching, they're just chilling, it's that, it's their release time for that kind of stuff. I would not, I would not want to be a principal and have to enforce a no phones in the whole school, all day, at high school. That's, I wouldn't want no part of that.
And then, on the other side of that, so the elementary school kids on the buses. So I see arrival, I had a conversation with someone about this, so to be, I'm a strict parent, phones not allowed for a long time. I'm the meanest parent on earth, I'm told that on a regular basis. So I will say though, at elementary school level, that's how, my daughter was seeing stuff on phones at the elementary school level, because somebody else had a phone. So even though you say, I don't want to have a phone, I don't want you to have a phone yet, because you're not old enough, you can't, you can't prevent what other people are doing. So I guess that's my question, I understand, so middle school has arrival to dismissal, and then if they have after-school. But elementary, the policy isn't, is also saying arrival, so like, what do we do about the bus? Like, it, there's, I understand that maybe bus drivers don't want to be in charge of that, but wouldn't it be easier just to be like, no devices? At the elementary school level, is that possible?
It is possible to, for our schools to communicate that and make sure that students understand, which they do at the elementary level, that they should not have, many of our elementary schools do, that they should not have phones on the bus. The, one of the, the big issues with that, or I guess challenges with that, is our bus drivers, if they're driving and looking at the road, it's hard for them to, and they don't have a monitor on the, on the, on the bus, and it's hard for them to effectively monitor that, so we would have to depend on a student coming up and saying, you know, Johnny had a phone out, and at that point, the bus driver can write that student up, and it'd be handled, you know, in the, in the, in the office after, or when, once the school day starts. So, but it is possible that those items aren't allowed, it's just gonna be hard for the bus driver to drive and monitor that at the same time.
And I don't want to make, I want as many bus drivers to come to Cabarrus County as possible, and I don't want to make their lives difficult any more than they already are. But I, I do, I do think that there's a lot of things to talk about, I appreciate the focus group that parents dedicated some of their time, and so did teachers and administrators that you all sat and talked about this. But I do, I would really want to encourage parents or anybody who's watching to please come to our meeting next week before we vote on this, because I think a lot of people have strong opinions about this, and I don't know if the policy goes far enough. Some people will say it goes too far, but it is time that we address it, and I would really like to hear feedback from more people, because I'm sure there was a lot of good fruitful discussion, but I'm not confident that there's a lot of diversity in opinion.
Ms. Lindsay.
So I'm also really happy about this policy. I think that it's time that we, we do implement this, and that it is consistent throughout the district, and I'm certainly, I might be the meanest parent too, I'm not sure. But elementary school kids, I just, you know, I understand there might be certain situations, but them having, you know, devices like that, just, it's, my kids didn't get cellphones till they were 12. So I, I am a, I, I love what you're doing at Concord, and I'm glad that you took that on to start that sooner rather than later, before we started talking about implementing this as a district. I do know though, that at some schools, and this goes along with dress policy and everything else, there's some that are strict on this, and, and make this happen and implement it, and will back the teachers when they send it to the office for a referral or whatever, and then there's some that are way more lenient. And so I hope that regardless as to what we come up with as the consistent policy through the district, that the principals understand that they are responsible for making sure that the teachers are implementing these policies consistently in their classrooms, regardless as to what school it is, what grade level it is. We just really need to put that forth, because it is gonna be hard. I mean, your numbers show that, you're, you're basically taking kids who were on devices all the time, and some of these kids are on devices all the time in their classroom. The Chromebooks are used regularly in class, and so we, it's gonna be a period of time for them to have to kind of wean off of these devices in, in class. But we all know that this is the right way to do. They learn better, they pay attention better, and, and, you know, their, their brains are being rewired by all of this electric, you know, electrical usage. So, but I do want to make sure that when we do implement this, that, that the principals understand that when the teachers send these referrals to them, they need to be holding the kids accountable and, and making sure that we really make this change happen. So thank you for this, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the work that went into this, I really do.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Ms. Blackwell, or Ms. Lindsay, the, and that was one of the goals of this whole group, is consistent implementation and consistent, the consistent guide, or expectations across the district, so that everyone is operating under the same rules. And, and teachers do have the support of the admin, administrators to say, yes, that is a district policy, that's not just some rule I made up at my school, that is a district policy, and that's something that we're, we're required to enforce.
Mr. Walter.
Thank you for the presentation as well. We've been talking about this, so how do the public who's watching, or the public that isn't watching, how do they get to review this policy, to see these changes, or the proposed changes? I mean, is it just board docs, are we doing any more than that?
The, at this point, that is, we, we can look at putting it out if, in a, in a more public way, right now it is on board docs, right now.
I'd like, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see at least an effort to communicate that, because it does change things, I mean, it does define things, which is nicer, but essentially it says that these devices have to be off, and they can't be on the person, so you can't put it in your pocket. It's gotta be either a bookbag or somewhere else. So if, if, you know, again, if from a parent perspective, you're trying to get a hold of a child, that student, they go there, have to contact the office essentially to send a message?
Yeah, I mean, we have that a lot, that they'll call and call the kid down in the front office.
But you know where the kids are, you can convey those messages if it's an important message from a parent to get to a child, or a student. I think there is some confusion still with it, but again, it's a first read, so this is, we have kind of a month to kind of tweak, tweak it. We talk about, again, we talk about the instructional time, but then in this policy, we also talk about school-sponsored events, and then we, what is that exactly?
School-sponsored events would be after-school athletic events, that would be dances, things that happen after school that may not happen during the school day.
They can't have their phone out at the dance and taking pictures of their friends and stuff, is that, or whatever? I mean, I, you know, again, it's just, it's not well enough defined, does it mean field trips, does it mean sporting events, you know, those type of things? I get the instructional time, that makes sense, that's clear, but I don't think we are real clear on what school-sponsored events are, I think we probably need to tweak that a little bit. I think, overall, it's, it is, we do have a distraction problem, I have a kid with a cell phone addiction as well. I mean, there are some benefits to the cell phone, some people use it with the homework study apps and other things that are available, but again, it's, it's hard to keep a kid off, off the device when they're bored, so, thanks.
Mr. Floyd.
Thank you, and thank you for tracking this all year and sharing what you learned, and giving actual data, because I think that is really important, especially the zero parent complaints at the end of the day. A couple of things, and one, I'm gonna tell a story, I had a zero tolerance policy in my classroom, and it was, it was hard to do at first, but it really, it turned into a game almost. I mean, they, if I'm being honest, they loved it. We created a Twitter account called Coach Floyd Got My Phone, and if you got caught with your phone, I got it, it got out on Twitter, and every kid would bust you up for it in the cafeteria, whatever. And I had some bad little kids in there too, and that, one of the worst BED kids I had built me a cell phone jail and carpentry class and put it on my desk, they thought it was funny, and it was a good, everybody bought into it, it wasn't malicious. And, and you know, we had, up there my, my class objectives, it was get Juwan's phone, get everyone's phone, give snitches credit for snitching, is my first three things. So I mean, it was a very, you know, it was playful, but they also had empowerment over their own situation, and it is possible, and they do buy into it. Kids adapt pretty well, they're still kids, they're still being molded. Honestly, adults have a harder time with this stuff, and parents have a harder time with this stuff. So, one, it is very possible, and, and we have to have everybody involved in enforcing it. I think a lot of the questions that we will get, and that we traditionally get over time, are, how do I reach my child? Reach them the same way my mom reached me in case of emergency. I bet if I went to Concord High School at 11:12 tomorrow and said, Dr. Auerbach, where's Bob Smith, you know where he is. I know, because I've done it, and you do know where they are, and at other schools too. I don't necessarily know everybody's situation, I know we can look at certain individual situations, but I can't think, generally speaking, that I need to be able to reach my child every single hour, every single day, when I know where they are, I know what they're doing, if it opens the door for a distraction like that. Another question I get from people is safety during chaotic moments. Couple years ago, we had all those bomb threats in a row, and people wondered, why can't I call my child, why can't my child call me? Well, in, in actual emergency, the arbiter of information flow does not need to be a 15-year-old or 350 15-year-olds, okay? That doesn't help the situation, it may help you feel better, but it doesn't change anything about their actual situation. And what you need to know is that they are taken care of, they are under control, and they are safe under our care. In the case of a bomb threat, any, if there is an actual bomb in a school, it's not gonna be a hardwire, it's gonna be a remote trigger. Last thing you need is 350 cellphone tower pingin' right next to a remote bomb. So we think about, in our own bubble, I want to reach my kid, but we don't always think about how actually important in the grand scheme of things is it to be able to do that all the time in those situations? And how much is it helping the situation, yes, it helps you feel better, I'm not saying that doesn't matter, you do, you do need to know in those situations. But it's not helping your child for them to stop in the middle of the fray, text you what's going on, and then continue their escape, okay? So I, I think that's something that we really need to make sure we're clear about with people, and we're being honest and transparent, even though that might be an uncomfortable thing. And two more things here, I would imagine the bus is a lot like the cafeteria, there are times where it is kind of nice to, probably safe to have something for them to zone in on, instead of each other with the, what goes on in those spaces. So I, I think we've got a lot of input from people on that. Probably the most important thing that we're not talking about here is modeling. We all talk about kids these days have a cell phone problem. You know, I read that the most, on my phone, on Facebook. Who do we think we are? Half of us up here spend more time texting on our phones than looking at the people talking during the board meetings. As teachers, as board members, as staff, we can't just tell kids, alright, don't do it, and then do it in front of them, that doesn't work. And we can't tell teachers and principals to enforce it if we don't do it, that doesn't work. So we have to, as the adults and as the leaders, model the behavior that we need them to see. Yes, there are emergencies that, that happen, and things like that to keep an eye on, but we have to be cognizant of that, and that doesn't get talked about a lot, but it will not work without modeling. You are modeling no matter what, it's what you're modeling that, that matters. So we've got to be very cognizant, me, us, all of us involved in this policy has to be very cognizant of that. And I just, I applaud the way that you, you did it in Concord. And I just, I applaud the way that you did it at Concord High. I do think that it can work everywhere. I do think people will adapt and adjust. And the last thing I'll say, a couple of weeks ago, I went to the Masters and you're not allowed to bring your phone in there. It was the best day of my adult life. I'd give anything. I might just spend the rest of my days in court so I don't have to have a phone with me and live it up. It's nice if you give it a chance, I promise, so, that's all for me.
Two things to go on. One, we did talk with our staff when we started this about modeling, and I told the kids, I said, if you see me playing on my phone, walking around, call me out on it. And some kids did, you know, and I said, well, it's not instructional time, I'm in the hallway, so I'm allowed to, right? But as far as the safety stuff that you mentioned, I think at Concord, we actually tell our kids, we have had things that maybe seem like more than a drill, right? And we're all, an evacuation, we're all out to the stadium. We get on the loudspeaker and we say, all right, we know you all have your phones, take your phones out, text your parents right now, tell them you're safe, that you're okay, because that will cut out a lot of problems there, too. So, I think it goes back to the modeling and teaching them how the appropriate way to use it. Texting, oh my God, there's a bomb at school is not appropriate versus, right, and then, because we're not going to, if we're all out in the stadium, we're not getting answering the phones in the office anyway, right? But telling the kids this is the appropriate way, yes, tell your parents you're fine, you're safe, it's okay, and talking through that. That came up in the committee, we talked about that because a couple of other high school principals were there, too, and discussing being smart and strategic about when they have those things.
Yeah, and that, like Dr. Auerbach just said, that was one of the main things that was brought up in the work group, too, is if we're going to commit to this and ask our students to do this as adults, we should also be modeling that. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Sure.
A lot of what has been talked about is about personal devices that families have ownership over the devices, but it's instructional time, it's valuable time. I only have those students in the high school setting, I only have them for 87 days. I have so much to accomplish. But I did want to touch on the Chromebooks. Yes, we are one-to-one and yes, I need to utilize them often, but I love the fact that we have Dino where I can monitor what is on their screens and I can set parameters and I can block certain apps, and so I hope that that's not something that we ever say we don't need because I think that that supervision aspect is really beneficial. And I know there are certain teachers in my building that will lock down everything except for the exact website that they need, and I wish they would give me a little training so I can do a little better on that, but just even being able to monitor what they are doing. If we're, if I've got a lesson and I need them all to be using this certain website, I easily can look at my screen, I minimize the little boxes as small as I can, and I throw it up on the big screen and they kind of self-monitor each other. We're like, oh, three people are off task, let's fix our screens. It's another way of modeling and keeping kids accountable for their instructional time, and that's just what the devices that we actually do own and can monitor. So, we can't do that with our personal devices, but I think with Chromebooks, we do have the ability to make sure that our instructional time is valued when we do need to use our devices. So, I just wanted to touch on the school devices.
And we really talked with our staff about that, too, because we got so used to COVID time, right? Everybody pull up your Chromebook, get on campus. We tell them, if you don't need the computers, they shouldn't be on your, on the desk, right? Tell the kids, we're not using them right now, they don't even need to be on, so let's focus and just kind of, it just, we got natural with it just being up, right? If you don't need it, don't have it out there. So, all devices are distractions.
Yeah, and that's point number two on this, screening this up now, and something that we talked about was student use of personal electronic devices for instructional purposes. And the will of, or I guess the work group was, and the policy committee, that it was better to channel all that through the Chromebooks for reasons that you're, we can monitor those, we can restrict those, however, we cannot restrict people, the personal devices, cellphones, iPads, those types of things.
Mr. Tredaway?
As you know, I've been somewhat behind the scenes with the policy committee and cellphone committee and all that. I am going to support this policy, but I do need to say, I feel like it's a transitional piece. The mental health, the data is clear. I mean, the metadata is clear and I feel like this is a good step in the right direction. Our freshmen after that year will, you know, they won't even know what bringing a cellphone and having it out in school means. So, I do think, for me, speaking for Sam, I see this as a transitional piece that we can look at and look at what, whether, no matter what, we're going to be looking at it, I'm sure at the end of the first semester and saying how are things going? But I just can't overlook the data anymore about the mental health of our students. And the data is getting worse as it comes in. So, I support this, I think it's a great transition. I do think that we might need to look at making it even tougher if we have to.
Ms. Sandage?
I was just going to ask if you identified any data on students who use devices for like calming techniques?
I don't have any hard data on that, but I think that's the part when we came up with kind of how we were going to do it is for some kids, just knowing that their phone is in their pocket, right, is like their security blanket, those types of things. So, that's why I said, we're not going to get into it. Give me your phone, let me take your phone, because without a doubt, we would have escalation, we would have issues with that type of stuff. Some kids just have in their hoodie is their security blanket for those types of things. So, we want them to feel comfortable, and I think for parents, too, right? Like, so some parents are like, I know my kid's phone is in their pocket, that I know if they really, really need me, they can get me. If they couldn't bring it, especially in high school, student drivers and things that are there, you know, football game, we don't get out until 10 o'clock at night, right? Some of those things, they feel comfortable just knowing it's there, even though you're not using it and doing it, just knowing it's in your pocket. I don't have any hard data, but I feel pretty confident.
So, should there be a situation where that is the case, you feel confident in being able to address it, is what I hear you saying? My concern is that a child uses a device for a calming technique as it relates to their mental illness, substance use disorders, and that not be available to them.
Yeah, so we don't take, the way ours is, again, they have it at class change if they go to the bathroom, if they go to lunch, they have it with them at all times, it's just during teaching instructional in the classroom time.
Yeah, and if it's written into their 504, their IEP, I mean, there are, these devices are used for all kinds of different things, and that is written into the policy draft as well, that it can be used for those purposes, however, not without that during instructional time.
Got it. So, if a person has an IEP or a 504 plan, we are following that, I got that part. I'm talking about that kid that maybe doesn't have one, and this is some, and I'm trying to find if you've identified or you've experienced that. And what I hear you saying is you have, maybe that kid needs to know that it's in their pocket, or that parent needs to know that it's in their pocket. What I want to understand is we have that somewhere. Who does that person communicate with? How is this addressed? That part is what I don't understand. So, for example, that kid who you knew they needed to know was in their pocket, how did you identify that? How did that kid or that parent express that to you? Or what's the system that they follow when that is the case?
Yeah, I think there's a couple ways. One, you know, in high, by high school, some of them self-advocate and self, that parents have great relationships with the counselors or the admin there. I think at Concord, again, I can't speak for all the other schools, but you know, the way admin and counselors are paired over student sections of the alphabet, we get to know our kids, obviously freshman, we got to learn them at the beginning of the year, but if they do have identified things coming up from the middle school, they're going to make sure our counselors are aware, our assist team is aware to be able to know, hey, you know, Johnny, Billy, Suzie, they have real strong anxiety or things that we're working with that way.
And that's communicated in this policy?
That is, if it's not into 504 or the IEP, that's what's written into this policy draft right now.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. Did you look at other school districts in the area to see if they had policies and how those policies were written and what kind of feedback they got? I know Cleveland, Cleveland School District put that in place last year. Didn't know if you had reached out and asked.
Yes, we actually reached out to several surrounding counties on what their policy was and how it was going, just to get feedback and give us a starting point on ours. I think it was eight or 10 different counties, counties in our geographical area, but also counties that are similar to ours in size and demographic, and that gave us some insight on getting started when we got started, when we started discussions in this cellphone work group.
Okay, and the other thing I'll just say is I did owe what Sam was, Mr. Tredaway was talking about as far as the escalation of mental health issues in our, especially high school students, because I don't know if there's any data out there that shows what fighting comes from students that have cellphones on things that are TikTok related or other type of events where they're supposed to do something. I know there's research on that from other schools that are willing to actually look into that, but is that something you talked about as far as having them out during their lunch and their breaks? I mean, is that a problem in our high schools with fighting?
That was discussed by our high school principals that were on the call. They did not feel, I think I'm speaking for Adam here, but they did, I guess the group did not feel that that was a strong contributor to the type of, I guess, fighting or any type of altercation that was going on. Of course, it does contribute to some of it, and there's, that is addressed, just like if, in our day, when we did it mouth to mouth, you know, we argued face to face, you know, then that was addressed as well, so.
I can't say that it's never been there, but I will say that most of our major discipline issues that we've had were not because of social media or texting during school. Now, there might have been something that happened outside of school on the weekend, at night, in the neighborhood that came into school, but it wasn't because of the cellphones during the school day.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and that's one of the biggest challenges of this is, of course, we have them seven hours a day, then they go home at 2:15 or 3:30 or whatever, wherever they are, and from the time they go home to the time they come back, we can't control what they're doing on these phones. And that, a lot of times, whatever happens over the overnight hours gets then brought in with, without us knowing this is going on because it happened at 11 o'clock last night and now all of a sudden it's a problem at 8 o'clock on our site. So, that's, and that's part of the mental health issue as well, is we, once they leave us, we can't ban them from, you know, using them at home. We can't ban them from using it while they're with us during the day.
And I would just say, too, that, I mean, as a public education system, our job is to educate our kids, and these are their personal cellphones, they're bringing them into our schools. So, I don't think we have to apologize for trying to monitor this because we want to do what's best for the children and the kids as far as the education they receive when they're in our care. Mr. Tredaway?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our job is to enhance the learning environment as much as we can so that the best teaching and learning goes on within the classroom.
I just wanted to point out after my comments that there was a clear focus, as somewhere was on the presentation, for instructional distractions. That was the clear focus of the group, so I want to make sure I credit the group with attacking that goal and objective. I'm just saying that maybe I would like to, next year, look at the mental health, opening up the conversation to more of the mental health issues that we're seeing. But the group was tasked and charged with looking at instructional practice, and I think that's what they addressed, focused on.
Yeah, thank you. And one other thing about that, one of the things we mentioned is we, you're exactly right, our focus was eliminating distraction instructionally, but also creating a campaign, you heard me mention that at the beginning of this presentation, creating a campaign for our parents to understand what these devices are doing when they're with their parents at home or whoever they're with during the, after-school hours so that there is an awareness around this. I think that's our duty as well to equip our parents with that so that they can make decisions for their children when they're not with us.
Anything else, board members? Okay, so Mr. Walter is asking this to be put on the action agenda for our next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
So, you are up here for?
I am up here again.
8.03 for school fee revisions for 2425.
Yeah, so I am here to talk about, and I have a PowerPoint presentation for this, about school fees and proposals for the 2425 school year. So, just to give you an idea of how this whole process happens, if you could go to the next slide, please. There's an annual review of approved school fees that have been in place for a number of years, and there, at that point, we solicit input from district leadership and principals to see if there is any need to change those school fees based on pricing changes, et cetera, that occur from year to year or over a culmination of several years. And in this, we've carried out this practice as we do every spring in anticipation of the school year ahead, and we received feedback on two items that I want to bring to you tonight that our schools identified as needing consideration for revision. So, the first one is middle school yearbooks. So, the way that this works is there is a current maximum price, and what that means is obviously that is the most they can charge for a middle school yearbook. That doesn't mean that is the cost for every middle school. Every middle school has a different amount of students, as you can imagine. The larger schools have more pages in their yearbooks because there are more students to put in the yearbook. And what our middle school principals and schools have told us that due to the increased printing costs per page of the yearbook, this price continues to go up. And it's also based on the quality of the yearbook, of course. You could keep it at a certain price point, but as the price increases, in order to develop and create that product, then the quality of the product is going to have to be compromised. So, that's kind of the give and take on that, and just for reference, the last maximum price increase was prior to the 2415, 2415, 2015 school year, so we're talking 10 years ago. It was raised from 35 to 40 for a maximum price, and the proposed increase is to raise the maximum price to $45 from 40 for the 2425 school year. Now, that doesn't mean that every middle school is going to charge $45. If it is possible to create them for, we have some middle schools that are charging as little currently as $25 based on the amount of pages they need and the, I guess, the population of students that they're serving, you know, that price is determined. But there are some that are unable to create a yearbook that is under $40 that is a, due to the increase in printing cost. So, that is item number one. Item number two is middle school uniforms. So, the current maximum price, same deal for middle school PE uniforms is $20. That includes a shirt and shorts. I will point out that not all middle schools have PE uniforms, some of them do. Some of them choose to allow students to bring their own PE, or not PE uniforms, but their own shirt and shorts from home. So, but the ones that do have reported that it is becoming impossible for them to find a pair of shirt and shorts for a price point under $20. So, what's happening is if it costs $22 per uniform, of course, the school is then offsetting that price by $2 per uniform, and at that point, is taken away from funds that could be used for other things. So, the last maximum price increase for uniforms was prior to the 2013, 14 school year when it was raised to $20. And so, there is a proposal from our, from the middle school principals and staff to increase the maximum amount to $25 for the 2425 school year.
Any questions, board members? Ms. Lindsey?
So, help me understand with the uniforms, are the, are these students required in these specific middle schools to have said uniform?
Yes, in certain, in some of our middle schools, they are required as part of their PE class to change it, that's part of their, their grade is to change into, the participation grade is to change into those uniforms.
So, why is it at some and not either at all? Or why do we not give the option for all middle schools not to have to pay this money for uniforms?
That is something that has been left up to the school to this point and has been a school-based decision.
So, I, and I'm sorry, I'm just... So, I, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just talking here, but I, I think this goes back to the consistency of what we want to do as a school system, and to have some middle schools be able to decide that they're gonna charge parents $20 or $25 for a student versus other middle schools, whichever one you happen to fall in the district of, so your middle school, you don't have to pay that, and you can just bring your regular sh, I, I would think that you being required to change for PE should be the grade, not necessarily what you were wearing, whether it's their school uniform, PE uniform versus just regular shirts and shorts. I just remember back when I was in PE, we were required to change, and that was part of our grade, was to change out for gym, but we didn't have to necessarily buy the uniform. They had an option for us to buy the shirt and the shorts, but it wasn't required. So, I just think as, as a school system, we needed to decide consistency, like consistently across the board, whether or not this middle school and that middle school, it should all be consistent, in my opinion, across the board, so.
Mr. Treadaway?
I, I, I just know, we're not consistent system-wide, but I do know why some of the PE teachers prefer uniforms, is because eighth graders can be very creative on what dressing out is, and with the uniform, it's consistent. So, that's, I, I'm not justifying the practice or whatever, but I know why, is that that's one less thing they have to deal with, is whether these are really shorts, or just your pants that you rolled up, and you're calling them shorts, so you don't get counted off and that kind of thing. So, I know that's the rationale behind it, but I understand the consistency as well, but it, it's just one less thing that the PE teacher has to take time with, dealing with.
Ms. Escobar?
Thank you for this information. It's interesting, it's been 10 years or so since we've looked at this. For the uniforms, the only thing I'm concerned about is just making sure that they're, regardless if it's $20, or if it's $25, there are gonna be families that can't afford either. So, what, what's in place to make that request, and I hope it's, there's no stigma associated with it, just like our lunch folks. And then, same thing, going back to the yearbook, it's not a requirement to have a yearbook, or whatever, but is there any way, if I really, really want one, to get some sort of, like, discount or some, do you know what I'm saying? Like, if, if, if we know that they, if they qualify for free lunch, is there some sort of discount or rate it for, for yearbook? And again, I understand a yearbook is not a requirement, if, if a PE uniform is, that's more important to me.
Yeah, and that's a good point, that schools do have established practices in place for that, the very thing you just described, especially with PE uniforms when it's a requirement, and, you know, obviously, when it's part of your grade, and, and you're not able to afford it, then there, there has to be some special consideration given on that, and, and our schools that do require it do have that in place. As far as the yearbook, I can't, I, I can't say with certainty on that, whether that's something that is, is being done, but I'll be happy to, to check on that.
Ms. Sandage?
I'm gonna have to agree with Laura over there. I, I don't see why we're doing one thing in one school and not doing something, the same thing at another school. I would suggest either we go with school uniforms in every middle school or not. I always thought it was interesting that we had to buy a school uniform when, you know, we could just put on shorts and a t-shirt. I also understand what Mr. Treadaway is saying about, you know, having the uniform on or not, and teachers having concerns with having to report, but, I mean, either they have the uniform on or not. It's just that simple, in my opinion, in that, that discussion. For the yearbooks, I'm not, I, I don't understand why, why we would have to go up in price if it's not something, I mean, you can determine whether or not you want a yearbook, or you can afford it, right? So, I, I'm not sure everybody buys a, a yearbook. I don't know what the numbers are for, for yearbooks, and why we would need to increase the price based off of what numbers, I guess is what I'm saying.
The, the yearbooks, i, in order to produce the yearbook, the price continues to rise due to the amount per page for printing, putting the book together. So, in order to create a yearbook, what used to cost 40 is now costing 45 for, 10 years ago, is now costing 45 for many of our, our schools.
And I get, I'm saying, I understand that part of it. What I don't get, though, is like, you don't have to get a yearbook. So, if you got, you've got a school paying 20 bucks for a yearbook, like, why aren't we going to that production place and getting the yearbook for, for cheaper? I mean, it seems like you, you're choosing who the vendors are, correct?
They are.
Each individual school?
The schools select the vendors, yes, and it's based on what kind of price, obviously, just like anything else, that they're, they're being given based on that, because they're, they're free to then switch vendors if, if they feel like they can get a better price somewhere else.
Right, so that's what I'm thinking, like, are we really doing the shopping if we got other schools getting $25 yearbooks, but we've got another school getting a $45 yearbook? Like, are we shopping around vendors?
Yeah, a lot, and that's, that's a, you know, something we may need to look at, but I will tell you, a lot of the difference in that is, for example, you have a middle school that has 600 kids in it, but then you have a middle school that has 1,100 kids in it. Obviously, that yearbook is going to cost more to produce than the yearbook with 600 in it, because there's more pages required to get everybody's picture in, and, and things of that nature. So, that's the reason for the difference in the amount of yearbooks in, in most cases.
Yeah, I just think we not shopping right. I think we need to let Mr. Penn shop, so he can get us some good deals like he got before, but, thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, my comment's gonna have to do with the presentation that was on board docs for the last couple days, but was taken down because it was last year's presentation, but you still have the fees crosswalk, I don't know if you could bring that up?
Yeah, sir. On the board docs, the crosswalk.
Yeah, my, my concern is, and still is, we had, we, last year, we doubled the price of a instrument use, user, usage fee to $50. We haven't increased something by 100% on anything in this entire group, pretty much. I think that's excessive, I think that should be lower than that. I'd like to see it either rescinded, or, or lowered to like $30 or something, because I think arts are important, and I think attracting kids to, to play in band is, is beneficial, and something we should be prioritizing. I mean, this thing that we had presented to us years ago says, "Why are the arts so important? It increases student engagement, and influences positive habits, behaviors, attitudes, increase, enhances creativity, sharpens their critical and intellectual skills, supports methods for learning language skills, integrates concepts of mathematics, expands on, and enriches learning opportunities in other subjects, inspires teamwork," so it's essentially creativity, critical thinking, and collaboration, and where people see that $50, and they're, oh, my kids aren't gonna take that. I, I, I just think that's something that we, that's, that's inconsistent with the, the whole chart here, and should be lowered. So, those are my comments, and I'd like to see it in action.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lindsay?
One more thing, and this is about the yearbooks. So, just, just a question, do, do people get to advertise in the yearbooks, like companies and that kind of stuff?
Yep.
Because I just remember when, and years ago, when I had yearbooks, that there was advertisements in there, and I think that that helped pay for, for those companies that did that, it helped to offset some of the cost of the printing and that kind of thing of the yearbooks as well. So, I, again, back to what Keisha was saying, yes, shop around for the printing, but we allowed advertising in the yearbooks as well, to help kind of offset some of those, those costs as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Longren.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, we'll move to 9.01. This is our item for action tonight, approval of low bid for Cabarrus Health Science Institute outfit, Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Mr. Tim Lauder.
Gave me once again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kapicki. With me here tonight is Mr. Tim Lauder, our Executive Director of Construction, and tonight, we are seeking your approval for a low bid for the Cabarrus Health Science Institute outfit. The construction department has received bids from three firms for the necessary outfit of modular units that are part of the new Cabarrus Health Science Institute project. The firms that submitted bids for this project were Lyles Construction Company, LCJ Construction Company, and Shellco LLC. These renovations in outfit work are designed to meet the long-term needs of the programming, and is determined through extensive discussions with the principal at Cabarrus Health Science Institute, Ms. Hyde, as well as her staff. The design and development of the outfit plans were facilitated by Morrisburg Architects in collaboration with Chambers Engineering. It is important to note that we have funding for this request as part of the overall budget for the Cabarrus Health Science Institute.
And those of you that are familiar with the project, we have two mobile units there. One is 11-plex, and the other one is a 6-plex. The work we have to do on the 11-plexes, it comes in as 10 classrooms now, we're gonna be adding, expanding the IT closet, we're gonna be adding some CT rooms and taking one classroom, or two classrooms actually, and converting that to a CT space, and some storage and IT closet. Also have a lot of casework that has to go into the school, the classrooms, because they're just bare classrooms. We have four classrooms we're putting in, cabinetry in, one of them has got extensive cabinetry, because it's the, it's the chemistry and the biology group, the other one may just have limited, made the casework. We also have to have access control for the project as, as well, to allow students to be able to pass it out there between both projects, not having to do doors open all the time for them to be able to make passes between the 6-plex and 11-plex. And then, in multiplex for the, smaller multiplex, that is the dining room, it also houses the principal's office and the admin staff, but we have to outfit that for, to, for the food and warming kitchen upgrades, as, as well as we have to put flooring, and also access control there as well. So, all together, we put those together, make a package, and put it out for bids, and on, and on April 26, we received three bids, and that's what you have today, and we're recommending the award to LCJ Construction for $475,680. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bauer.
Yes, so with that said, we would kindly request that the board consider suspending the rules and taking action on this matter during tonight's meeting. Delays beyond our control have certainly impacted some of the project as well, hence the reason we are asking for approval tonight, and we want to make sure that we certainly are meeting our projected project timeline. Our goal is to make sure that we have the staff, faculty and staff of Cabarrus Health Science Institute in that building no later than July 8. That is certainly our timeline we're looking to establish, that would allow them to be set up and have time to be ready for operation for the start of the 2425 school year. So, with that, we'll certainly pause for any questions.
Ms. Sandage?
Just so we can clarify for the public, what's the urgency? Like, what happened to delay the process?
So, one of the things, obviously, with the project itself, there are a lot of factors. Weather sometimes can be an impediment with what you're facing with these type of things as well, obviously, securing the site, getting the site prep taken care of, that was something else that was unique to this, because we have partnered with Atrium on this, to be able to use an existing parking area outside of the current Health Sciences College. They have been tremendous in working with, and allowing us access to that. So, some of these things just have sort of led to where we are now, in and obviously, having some product shipping, and having the 10-plexes, or 11-plex and 6-plex on site.
Thanks for being transparent, and thanks for the information in the presentation.
Mr. Walter?
So, when were the units delivered?
The units were delivered about four weeks ago. They have been installed or set up, and they have been dried in, so they are there, ready for us to do the outfit. We just need to have this budget obviously approved.
So, the total budget, the total budget is what?
Two million dollars.
Two million dollars.
Yes, sir.
So, then, the purchase those for, how much was the purchase for the two units?
Don't know off the top of my head. We could go back and review that to get the exact cost of each of those, but it was included within the total cost of the project itself.
And the budget, I mean, the budget is what?
Two million dollars, yes, sir. Well within budget here.
Still within the budget, so we also paid for somebody to design these changes?
Yes, sir.
How much was that?
Morrisburg Architecture did the internal design piece, so we could get it permitted.
And they designed that for how much?
I'm not sure exactly what that.
Yeah, the exact cost, once again, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, just seeing how.
The breakdowns, what you're looking for, yes.
The breakdown, is everything in line, and then they can guarantee they can finish this by July? Is that?
So, the upfitting would, the upfitting would take place, once we have approval in hand, they will, again, guarantee is a bit of a strong indicator there. They understand the timeline we're up against, and they know what the deliverables are in terms of meeting what would be an opening day.
You could add penalties if they don't get it done on time, right?
Yes, sir, but we had multiple discussions with all the firms that took the bids, and let them understand the timeline before they put their bid pricing in, and we have worked with all three firms, actually, all three firms are working with us currently, and we're very confident that they'll, they'll meet their obligations.
And then ultimately, how many students can we accommodate with this?
So, right now, they have 120 students. 120 right now, and another 60 coming onboard next year for total 180, and then program capacity at that point will be 240.
So, 240 for, are we gonna need, are we gonna need more, more buildings for that?
What we're putting in on site.
This gets us to the 240?
Yes, sir, that will allow for that.
Okay, that's what I want to hear, thank you.
That is right.
Ms. Lindsay? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We're gonna take a vote on this, so I need a motion.
I make a motion, we suspend the normal rules, and we approve the contract to LCJ Construction tonight.
A second. I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board members, we are at our adjournment of our meeting. We'll move to 10.01. I'll call for a motion for the meeting to be adjourned. Second, I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.